Happy, healthy New Year and may the blessings of the New Year find every one of us in the days ahead. So appreciate your coming out tonight. This is the City of Palm Coast City Council Business Meeting. Today is Tuesday, January the 2nd, 2024. It is 6:00 PM and we are in the community wing of City Hall. With that, I would ask that you please stand and join me in our Pledge of Allegiance following the pledge. You are welcome to remain standing for a moment of silence or reflect, meditate, pray, or pause for a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The clerk would call the roll, please.
Mayor Alvin.
Present.
Vice Mayor Danko.
Here.
Councilmember Hyder. Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Pontieri.
Present.
All members are present.
Thank you. Our first item of business on the agenda tonight is public participation. Give these folks just a second. In order for city staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns, please fill out a comment card with your contact information. The comment cards can be found on the table near the agendas or available from the communications director with her hand up in the back of the room. Anyone wishing to speak may approach the podium, provide their name, and may speak for up to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the mayor. Be concise and to the point. Avoid delaying or interrupting the proceedings and do not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments. Any person who becomes disorderly may be barred from making any additional comments and may be removed. And I would ask that you keep your public comments for items that are for agenda items for the time of that agenda item. But with that, I would invite the first member of the public that would like to make public comment to please step forward.
Good evening. Joe Runak, Seven Courtney Court in Palm Coast. Happy New Year to all. I'm up here again to talk about proposed cellphone tower at Seven Clubhouse Drive. But first, I did attend a workshop and our Palm Coast IT Director, one thing I would want to point out is that he said a wireless cellphone tower could be put up once it's more than 150 feet from, is considered a safe distance. And this seems unreasonable and outdated to me. 150 feet, 50 yards, is absolutely way too close. I'm no expert on the matter, but most of these comments from cellphone people say that 1,500 to 2,000 feet is more of the norm. So that was a huge surprise to me. I don't know when this 150-foot barrier or was considered, I think, in today's world with the 5G cellphone towers being much more powerful. It seems extremely outdated to me. No one recommends such a short distance for 5G. This proposal at Seven Clubhouse Drive fails in many, many of what it's trying to do. The address was never in the wireless master plan, probably because it's in a residential area. The piece of land is non-conforming. It is too small as far as what it would need. This was tried on the other side of the golf course to put up a tower approximately now three years ago. We've been dealing with this for over two years. I received a letter in the mail and this is just, again, going on too long. What we ask is the planning board not issue a special exemption due to location, due to all the negatives. Location, non-conforming, too residential. I ask that if it ever does come to you that you would consider all of these items in making a decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, for your comment. The next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Alvin, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Gina Weiss, Quail Hollow Community. No navigation easements at Flagler Executive Airport. The 2015 Master Plan of Flagler County Airport and regulatory requirements states that various methods to achieve compatible land use around our airport, which include plan-related options and actual implementation techniques, since it is more desirable to present the establishment of incompatible land uses than to correct them after the fact. These plans include navigation easements, an easement to establish specific land use restrictions typically in runway protection and approach areas. Also in the 2015 Master Plan is the Runway Protection Zone Eminent Domain Purchase Program. The runway protection zones located at both sides of the runways are areas of land that the FAA prefers to be free of residential uses. And the FAA highly recommends the landowners can either make certain that the zoning is compatible or that the required property be encumbered, again, with navigation easements to prevent incompatible land uses. We all recognize that the FAA takes notice that planes can fly below 500 feet when landing or taking off. That's a given. But the issue here now is the need for navigation easements to do so over private property. The lack of such an easement entitles the homeowner to compensation for the violation of their property rights, which extend 500 feet above our respective properties. Such rights were established in two U.S. Supreme Court cases and a Florida Supreme Court case along with nearly a dozen and even more now similar cases across the country. Recent comments made by the airport director refers to safety issues concerning landing approach and takeoff altitudes. Here again, navigation easements aside the safety issues can be rectified by slight modifications to flight paths concerning landings and takeoffs avoiding densely populated areas. After speaking with several pilots, they say banking to the left or to the right after takeoff is quite doable. Again, this is by no means a traditional airport. You could call tomorrow, try to make a reservation to go to South Carolina, and they will tell you to go to Daytona or Jacks. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there a next speaker, please?
Excuse me, one moment. Good evening, Mayor and Council, oh, excuse me. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers and staff, and Happy New Year. I am bringing this matter to your attention and it's not
Please, just introduce yourself so we have
Oh, I apologize. Joy Cook from Seminole Woods.
Thank you.
I bring in this matter before you, and it is not about city business related, but because several comments were made and misinterpreted on a local podcast show in where these two parties received information from the meeting on November 17th. As a person of truth, I feel that this needs to be corrected. On November 11th of 2023, I'm sorry, 2023, while listening to Realty Matters Podcast, the host Toby Tobin, also known as Go Toby, your business partner, your friend, and Walker Douglas of Douglas Properties and Development, were discussing several conversations about the residents of Seminole Woods, which I found very odd, but it got my attention. Toby said that one of the residents, and I believe it was I, had mentioned that Toby was a guest on a podcast show called Friday Free For All, and that I quoted him saying that he was pushing Westwood Development and that the water was coming up to US-1 by the railroad tracks and causing the east side of Palm Coast to flood out, and how he was at home watching the city council meeting at the time from his computer and was laughing out loud when he heard this. I did not say such a thing. I believe he's a little confused. So I will play the actual audio. Excuse me. Did I send it now? Message it, message it, sorry. I gotta find it, I'm sorry. Here we go. You're about to hear a podcast called Realty Matters. The voices you will hear will be of that of Toby Tomlin, your business partner, and Walker Douglas of Douglas Property Development. The ironic thing is both of them denied hearing it. I wonder if it's because after the meeting these podcasts were taken down. Can you hear it?
Prices in Florida will accelerate the rest of the market press-wise. Especially if it, Florida at one point was a sandbar. Again, it's where a glorified sandbar. So who's to say Florida doesn't become flooded again? In which scenario? There's two ways of thinking on this. If Florida goes back to it being a sandbar, we're going to lose all the beachfront property. Right? New beachfront property.
Your, your three minutes, if I could suggest if
All right, thank you.
If, no, if you'd like to leave a copy of that with the clerk.
I definitely will.
Okay, thank you. Is there another speaker? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. Terry Ventrelli, Seminole Woods. And I did speak with you prior.
Bring the mic just a little bit closer. And I would also ask city council members to, just a reminder to keep the mic close so that those that are listening online can hear as well. Thank you.
I did speak with you prior as a council about my property, Five Segal Place, and flooding issues that I'm having. And I did get a nice visit from Lynn Stevens and Jordan Meyer. So as far as I know, the status is there's some additional work to be done. I'm not quite sure what that means. One of the things that I'm here for is, I had mentioned to her and I told her that I would bring it up at this meeting. I've talked to other members of the community who are also having problems with flooding and water intrusion, like my, my property had water intrusion, about getting some sandbags so that we can do something to mitigate some of the, or prevent some of the damage that's being done to our homes. And so far, we've been told that that's not available to us at this time. So I was wondering if that could be reconsidered, because there are some individuals who are in a much worse situation than I am, and their, their yards are lakes. And my, my neighbor behind me spent $8,000 to put in drains around her property, and they're still having to repair all of the water damage in their home. So I'd like to try and prevent that from happening, and that would be helpful.
Thank you for your comment. Make sure you fill out a, a comment card as well, if you would be so kind. Is there another speaker that would like to make a public comment now? Yes, ma'am. Just one second. Do we have seats for the, the folks there standing? If you can, fill in those empty seats, if you would, that'd be great. I'm sorry, ma'am. You go ahead, please.
It's okay, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and city council members and all of the members of the Palm Coast community that are here tonight. I'm the founder of Flooded in Flagler, and I live on Point Pleasant Drive. I don't know if you've looked at the website, Mayor, or any of you sitting up here, but there's hundreds of pictures of people's yards here in Palm Coast that are flooding. And I began experiencing flooding issues at my home four years ago, and I didn't really have any problems until the two new homes were done behind my house and next to my house. So that's why I started the page to begin with. I really didn't know what I was getting into when I started the page. If you knew how many people contact me, call me, threaten me, call me names, you have builders here in town that have construction managers that are felons, that like to threaten women of power, that like to speak out about things that are wrong in the community. How do you know those people are going by the rules that you're setting for the houses that they're building? I wouldn't think they would, would you? So just to say, I'm no building expert. I'm just a retired government official myself. Speaking in front of city council comes second nature to me, but I'm used to law and order. And I don't feel like we're having it here. I don't see any kind of timeline or any kind of forward progress, except for us coming up here basically begging and bringing it to y'all's attention about what's going on with our homes. So I also have listened to those podcasts, and I've done tons of research on the permitting and the Community Development Department Division that you guys have set up here in Palm Coast. And I've found all these nice little diagrams about side swells and property lines and easements and stuff, but none of us have any of this done to our new homes that were built around us, the ones that are flooding. So I'll prove to you that it's causing the flooding to our homes. A lot of people in here are working on that. A lot of people that aren't here right now are also working on that. I'm just seeing things aren't being followed correctly. They're just not being. You guys, FEMA gave new building standards, but the new building standards were set for homes in the flood zone, which are on the other side of the bridge. Those standards are being done to all of the new builds, which is what's causing the problem. I've found ethics violations, codes violations. I've found things about y'all that I don't want to bring up here that I would have been fired for immediately. So please, can we vote with our conscience and us human beings in mind instead of our wallet, because a lot of you are involved in real estate, and I really think that is a conflict of interest for all of us.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
I, I'm going to ask the audience to hold back their comments and their applause. It's not fair to the prior speaker or to the next speaker. So I will ask you to please hold those comments and whatever else that you're doing until we finish the meeting this evening. Next speaker, please.
My name is Celia Buglisi. I live in Palm Coast since 1991. I am also with Protect Palm Coast Group, fighting for our city for a long time. From the first tower we defeated. We're talking about the 5G towers that affect our health and affect the price of our properties greatly. And it's not the towers, it's where you decide to locate them. 150 feet from a home. Imagine the value, what the value of the home is affected. And why, if this tower in number seven clubhouse drive was not originally on the 2017, 2018 tower wireless plan for Palm Coast, why has been now decided to be located in number seven clubhouse drive? Thank you, Mr. Clufus. You are very, you were very important on that wireless plan. And you know what? We have to suffer the consequence, the consequences, because you should make sure these towers don't go anywhere near 150, 250, 300 home, 300 feet from any homes, because where you leave the tower over there in, in Grand Swamp, by Grand Haven, is at least 2,000 feet or 3,000 feet from any home, and we deserve all the same respect. So we don't want this tower. I totally, I'm backing up Mr. Joe Runak here, because he also represents, we are, we represent both our HOAs and all the homes around that tower that you want to locate there in number seven clubhouse drive. That's not the right place. Also, we are overrun here by these airplanes, schools, airplanes in the, in this, in this airport, doing touch and goes over our neighbors' homes. This is ridiculous. I mean, we are being walked over here, even though we have a developer, right, on the news saying, oh, you should be happy to live in Palm Coast, and right, reported. And also, not only be happy to live in Palm Coast, don't go and complain. Go and read a book. This is one of the biggest developers from a lead here. This is the people that you get meetings when we are not in the meetings with the stakeholders. These are the stakeholders that do not respect us. We have rights to, because we have our homes here. Don't do what you're doing with these towers, with this airport, what you allow in this airport. Don't do what you do with people flooding their lots, because now they build four, five feet higher, right? Don't do the things that you're doing to Polo West, over there in Old Kings Road. This is horrible what you're doing to those people as well. So please change what you're doing and vote for us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Darlene Shelley, Hidden Lakes, Palm Coast. The Florida Commission on Ethics Code for Public Officers Regarding Voting Conflict of Interest. No county, municipal, or other public officer shall vote in an official capacity upon any measure which would inure to his or her special private gain or any principal whom he or she has retained or the parent organization or subsidiary of a corporate principal by which he or she has retained of a relative or of a business associate. In addition, no appointed state or local officer shall participate in any manner which would inure to the official's officer's special private gain, the special profit gain for any principal by whom or he or she has retained of the parent organization or corporate principal by which he or she has retained of a relative or a business associate without first disclosing the nature of his or her interest in the matter. Under F disclosure, the Ethics Code states, "Conflicts of interest may occur when public officials are in a position to make decisions that affect their personal financial interest." This is why public officers and employees, as well as candidates who run for public office, are required to publicly disclose their financial interests. The disclosure process serves to remind officers of their obligation to put the public interest above personal considerations. It also helps citizens to monitor the considerations of those who spend their tax dollars. From the Land Development Code 2.505A, "The proposed development must not be in conflict with or contrary to the public interest." D, "The proposed development must not create an unreasonable hazard or nuisance or constitute, constitute a threat to the general health, welfare, or safety of the city's inhabitants." In addition, from 2.603, "When reviewing a rezoning application, the PLDRB and the city council shall consider B, its impact on the environment or natural resources, and F, compatibility with proximate uses and development patterns, including impacts to the health, safety, and welfare of the surrounding residents." And in Special Exception 2.701, "Will the project promote the public health, safety, welfare, convenience, and comfort?" And 2.703C, "No application for special exception you shall be approved unless the PLDRB finds that the request meets 2.505 and is C, compatible with the surrounding neighborhoods, and promotes the value of the surrounding land, structures, or buildings." You have failed to abide by your own codes, and you have failed the residents of Palm Coast.
Thank you for your comment. Let's have the next speaker, please.
Hello. James, how you doing? Been hearing about complaints about flooding over the last several months. And I know there's a meeting coming up Saturday, but I want to give you my experience. My house was built in 2004 according to the newest codes at the time, which was somewhat higher elevation than previously used. I think 11 inches, 16 inches, I don't know what it was. The back of my property was about this high, right, above my neighbor's backyard, and there was a slope on, on there. So water drained, even though it was draining towards the front like it's supposed to, it did drain onto the neighbor's backyard. While he complained to me, he gave me copies of code regulations showing my property was in violation of the drainage requirements. I went to the city, the builder, the excavator, excavator, and submitted my issue. Was told my property was graded according to the proper specs, and nothing can be done. The neighbor threatened to sue me for flooding his property. And I don't know what would have outcome if we would have done that. But I was younger then, so I was able to dig out that slope, and I hired somebody to install anchor block to make a wall so it would be straight and the water wouldn't run off. So it became my responsibility, my responsibility, since no one would back me up. So my point is, a lot of people here are having their properties flooded by neighboring houses that are built too high, and they're paying $10,000 to correct the problem. That should not be their, their expense, and they should get reimbursed for that expense. Any homes in the planning stages or in the process of building that sit higher than the neighbors should be evaluated and halted construction until proper drainage is installed. And, and the offending property is responsible for correcting any issues that can cause damage to the neighboring properties. So I hope this is part of the flooding meeting we'll consider. Now, also, in Ask the Mayor, someone addressed the turn-off lanes, which I know I'm always about turn-off lanes, and they specifically mentioned the Pine Lakes turn-off. And unfortunately, it says here it's not in the grant funding. So I hope you would include that into all these other lanes, because that is a very, very critical turn-off lane. You can't pull off to the median, the median to get out of the way, because there's a big pothole there. You wreck your car. So that Pine Lakes needs to be really extended to alleviate traffic and issues. And my other comment is that, yeah, please stop building multifamily houses, especially in single-family communities. I support a forensic audit, because we need to know where our money's going and allegedly who may be responsible for errors. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. I'm handing out a visual of the problem that's facing the residents of Florida Park Drive with approximately 8,000 cars per day, 60 feet from residents' homes. Not only is it giving you a visual, I have also suggested a solution. Not only have I suggested a solution, I have given links to scientific studies that, about long-term exposure to traffic-related air pollution and selected health outcomes, what it will do to people. Not only that, I have included a link about traffic noise and how it harms children. And there's another one that says noise pollution, a modern plague. The modern plague is, it also affects elderly people. It affects them in a way that it causes their blood pressure to rise, and that's not very good. There's, when I, when I, when I look back here, I see people. But sometimes, when I look up here, I see people handling, handling property, but not the people. That's, that's an issue. Think about it this way. How many ordinance have you passed in the last year that dealt with property? And how many ordinance have you passed in the last year that dealt with protecting residents? Wow, I really would like to know that number. You know, when I, we need sort of an order, we need an ordinance that says excessive traffic to violate, to protect residential neighborhoods from excessive traffic being, through a neighborhood being a thoroughfare. We need an ordinance to protect the residents. It's, it's, it's mind-boggling how many more of these residential neighborhoods are going to find themselves flooded with traffic because we have nothing to protect them. There's nothing there to protect them. At least I can't find it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please. Can we find seats for these folks that are standing in the rear?
Hi, my name is Carol Brassfield, Brassfield from the W section. I'm exhausted from worry. I just don't understand this elevation of these new bills next to pre-existing homes. The new communities they are building, building off of US-1 are all at the same level. This makes no sense to me that this cannot be continued here in existing neighborhoods. We do not have beachfront property. We are 29 feet above We are 29 feet above sea level. We live west of I-95. This administration is causing possible flood zones at a homeowner's expanse because of lack of maintenance of swales and the elevation of new builds. I have reached out to everyone I can think of for help to save my home, and this is not what my retirement was supposed to be like. What is the thinking here? It makes no sense other than destroy and flood my property and home and the homes of others, and we are all innocent in this madness. Why is this stupidity allowed to happen? Explain why my home and property has to suffer and my health from worrying. Where are my rights? What have I done and what have others done to have to deal with this lunacy? Please, someone explain this to me. The only reason for thinking of this happening is because the city won't maintain its swales or, you know, causing flooding onto other property. Thanks, thanks to this, I will be living in between two castles on man-made hills or mountains, won't have a chance in hell of not getting runoff on my yard, and I will hold, I will be told to fix the problem myself. And only reason, the only problem I really have is because I moved to Palm Coast because I thought it was a beautiful city. Mr. Mayor, I repeat the issue of your conflict of interest since you are a developer and realtor. Please excuse yourself or step down from this decision to stop further building until the elevation issue is rectified. You cannot serve people justly with your allegiances to others. The people with pre-existing homes should come first, not developers, and not your agendas at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there, please, please. Okay, I'm not going to entertain applause or comments in between speakers or recess the meeting. So consider that a warning. Please respect the next speaker so you're not eating into their time. Yes, sir, please go ahead.
Good evening, Jeremy Davis, Palm Coast P section. I, I support a forensic audit, find, you know, we're going to follow the money because we all know what you're doing here. Every single one of us that you think is dumb, you think we're dumb. I told you three weeks ago that I'm a man of my word, and I'm a hold up to my word. I'm going to find out how corrupt you are. I'm going to keep digging.
Please.
Because you, and there's other people in here that are all in real estate. Y'all are allowing this to happen. None of us were in flood zones, but all of a sudden, the properties being built are raised up four feet because they're supposedly in a flood zone. Where defense easement go, that's gone. There's a lot, a lot of bad things have happened in this city, and you guys are the problem. Please, when y'all vote, make sure you don't.
Address to me, please.
Reelect these people. I'm, I'm just allowing these people to understand, because you and I both know that you're corrupt. Maybe you should put the apartments out by Princess Place on Old Kings Road right next to your house. Think about that.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Peter Johnson, Palm Coast. First off, Happy New Year, everyone, 2024. I hope we could look at things a little bit differently this year. There's a lot of issues going on in Palm Coast right now, a lot. And the people are yet to be represented, and we are continuing to push through this building. The flooding is out of control. We flat-out need a moratorium on all infill lots until there is ordinances to take care of this issue. And Mayor, I found it interesting, you're, you're actually running for reelection, I saw in a local newspaper. When you're out, so, hold on. From my understanding and my experience of doing it, you need about 700 signatures in order to get on the ballot. You only need 8,000 for a recall. Maybe you should go get those signatures instead.
Thank you for your comment. Next, please, please, please. Please respect the next speaker. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Leah Labarge. I live in Quail Hollow in the Double L section. I have lived in Palm Coast for fifth, well, a year and a half, moving here from Boise, Idaho, and also I've lived in Arizona, seeing the development that is taking place in Palm Coast and other areas that I lived, and it's already making me concern the decision that I made to move here. I was at a meeting here maybe five or six months ago and expressed concerns about the development that was taking place, particularly in the Quail Hollow area, which seems to be a hotspot right now, losing a lot of the, the preserve area for the wild animals that are out there. We do not have sidewalks in our community. We do not have the swales that are being taken care of, the new homes that are being built, there's standing water constantly. I know that you have agenda items tonight that are going to be presented that is going to increase significant traffic in our neighborhood, and we've already seen it, the cut-throughs to come through the Double L section from these new developments, excuse me, and they haven't even happened. And we have the same elevation issues in our neighborhood with all of a sudden these houses popping up that are higher elevation than, than the other ones. I'm asking this council and you, Mr. Mayor, to look at the situation, look at what you are developing, because you do not have the infrastructure in place to take care of this. The Double Ls received a letter from the city a year and a half ago that our roads were going to be addressed. They have not. They are literally falling apart, crumbling, and yet we have potentially 2,000 homes that are being looked at. We already have two other developments that have already cleared the lots on Belter and Citation, potentially another 240-ton homes on the corner of Belter and Citation that are to come, which is all going to drive all of this to the roadways through the Double L section from Grand Landings and from anything else that's coming. You, you have to put the infrastructure. I will be looking to see what your reserve study is, what your IDT report is, what your expectations are, and when these things are going to be taken care of. Because if you're not dotting your i's and crossing your t's, you shouldn't be growing, because we don't have the money for it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Was there another speaker? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Robert Meyer. I live on 117 South Cooper's Hawk Way. I wasn't going to speak at this time, but listening to some of the comments and having observed things over the last year or two, I think the year that has passed, I think the council has set some new records. And I think we've, you've probably had a record number of new homes and, and new developments during the year. I think you probably have a new record for the number of car washes in the area. And not too far behind that are all the storage units. And I don't have a trophy to hand to you, but it's, it's, it's a record that I think we need to take a very, very hard look. It seems like we're growing but not planning. And my experience in life, and I'm almost 83 years old, so I have some experience, probably more than most of you up there on the council. I had, we got married at 18 years old. By the time we were 20, my wife and I, we had two children. And my wife says we need to have a couple of more. She just felt it was her job, she was supposed to have more children. And I grew up in a family of nine, and I wasn't too crazy about having more children because... Anyway, I said, no. As, as much as I want to have children, we're going to have, if we want more children, we have to plan for it first. And we did, and we were very successful, and we ended up with a total of five children. So I'm saying that you need to take an attitude and think about that process, because there's so many things that are going wrong now, because we're growing, but the planning wasn't there. There's, there's so many of the infrastructure that is terrible in here. I thought it was bad where I came from in New York State, but it's getting pretty close to the same as what I, I moved from in 2000, in 2000. So just please, in this coming year, if you don't do anything else different, look ahead more than you're looking at getting more homes in here right away. I know it's finances and you get your hands on money, but in the long run, it's going to hurt you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker that would like to address me now? Yes, sir.
Brian Budka. Coming up on Agenda Item D, we will be discussing a rehearing, and I'm very confused on, are there any differences between the protocol for a rehearing and a regular hearing? Is there a difference in public comment? Is there a difference on anything we can say? Could we get clarification on what the difference between the rehearing and a regular hearing is? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker.
Good evening, George Mayo. Happy New Year to all. I'm here, last month at one of our meetings, we had Little Leaguers here, we had soccer player teams here, we had football players here, and all of them wanting more and more fields and more lights for the fields and everything. And I don't have a problem with that. We need to grow, and we need to have them grow. But we also know that Palm Coast is a city of elderly and senior citizens. There's a large number. And with that becomes a problem is, I will leave this with the clerk, is making history, I mean newspapers, is loneliness. And cities and towns everywhere are finding the cost of loneliness with seniors. Medically, they're not staying in the house and they're not spending their money. So there's many things that can be done. Not having a problem with building more fields, I just ask again to think in the long term for a standalone senior center. If you build it, they will come. I had an appointment today up in St. Augustine and going up US-1, all the communities that are being built, and you see signs, 55-plus, 55-plus, 55-plus. They aren't going to have a whole lot of use for soccer fields and, and T-ball fields and everything else. But I think we do need a standalone senior center to help our, our seniors here. We have everything else. My second question here is, we just had fireworks for the New Year's, and we usually have fireworks for the Fourth of July. And I just read an article in the USA Today on how the fireworks disturb, greatly disturb the wildlife. And I've asked before, and I'm asking now, before the Fourth of July, can we look into and what many cities are doing, are doing drone shows? With fireworks, you have a lot of debris coming down, you have the possibility of accidents, the possibility of injuries. Drone shows are becoming more and more popular. You can look into drone shows going by the time-wise. If you have 20 minutes of fireworks, you can have 20 minutes of, of drone shows, et cetera. You can pay by the number of drones you want to be used or, or not. So can we just consider that and maybe help save the environment a little bit, and just look at drone shows before we just automatically say, okay, we're going to have fireworks? Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker that would like to, yes, sir?
Happy New Year, Council. Dennis McDonald. I came to ask a couple of questions tonight, but one has to do with governmental process and specifically relating to the agenda for these meetings. My understanding is that the agenda to these meetings, as certainly takes place in other municipalities, is under the control of the city manager. So nothing gets on this agenda, okay, without the city manager's approval. So what I'm thinking here is, I go back and I look at the record, and I see that there are things that are on agendas from 2023, recently in 2023, that are showing up in the agenda today, okay, and have shown up other times, okay, that have already been decided. So I'm trying to understand here, why is the city manager allowing these things back onto the city's agenda? Okay, because they've already been decided. That's my first question. My second question is, back in February, almost a year ago, we had the triple density zoning of the Harbor side decided in this room, and it was on February 7th. And one of the interesting things is, when you study those tapes, you see that there's, how can I say, Mr. Mayor, like a pause, like a dragging of our feet, okay, during the process when it was decided about the Harbor side, when that vote came up. Now, I went through the record, and I didn't find anything on my request. And so what I'm making an FOIA request here tonight for is exactly what was said between Mr. DiLorenzo, Mr. Livingston, and the other attorney who represented Harbor side. I think the people of Palm Coast need to know what that conversation was, because if you watch the tapes, now you can't hear what's being said, but you can see that there's a dragging of everyone's feet, we're just marking time, and then all of a sudden, after a conversation in the back of the room, okay, there's a nod, there's a decision, and all of a sudden, there's a vote. So I think it's only fair that the people of Palm Coast know what exactly was said between Livingston, the other attorney, and DiLorenzo. So, Mr. DiLorenzo. So consequently, I'm making that FOIA request here, and I think everybody in this room needs to know exactly what was said, and that would help us to understand how we got tripled the maximum zoning allowed in Palm Coast. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Thanks.
Is there another speaker, please, please? Next speaker, please.
Kathy Austria. Happy New Year, everybody. On a much lighter note, I didn't come for this reason, but opportunity. I appreciate when you notice that folks are, are, or are not speaking into the microphones. I watch these meetings, I re-watch these meetings. I wonder, though, if there's something that we can look into on the technological side, because, so Dennis won't be heard online, and it's due to no fault of his own, he's a tall guy, and it's, this is on a box. So I think, I'm hopeful we can find a better system. The second thing that I wasn't planning on talking about, but Celia reminded me, we were in a meeting, maybe I was online, but we were in a meeting, and someone from here referred to a meeting they had with the stakeholders of Palm Coast, or stakeholders in Palm Coast, it's not an exact quote. And, and most of you know me, you know that how you treat people is everything to me, everything. And I have been here for 20 years, and I have been quietly supporting our community. Most of you didn't even know what my foundation did or what, anything I was doing out there. And that was fine. But in my quiet space, I'm a stakeholder. I wasn't at any meeting. They are stakeholders. I'm just asking if we could be cognizant of, as to how we say what we say to the stakeholders here. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, yes, ma'am?
Hello, my name's Kathy. Hello, everyone. I'm from Seminole Woods. I, I moved in in 2000, February 2005, and I went through a couple of hurricanes here, never had any flooding in my yard. And now I am flooded every time we have a little bit of rain. And I took pictures of the neighbors in the left, the right, and behind me, two homes behind me, and they're like lakes, too. I didn't have any new houses built on the side of me, because when I moved here, they were all there already. But we have new duplexes on both ends of the street. So people are complaining about houses being higher up. There's no house being higher up from me right now. But because of the building, I think, and the flow, the flow of the water, it goes up to like halfway up my yard in the front. I have two subpumps right now. I was a single mom most of my life, so I have only so much money. And when I moved here and taking care of my house or whatever, I don't have an extra $10,000 like my daughter had to do to put in drainage to go to the front because their home flooded. I didn't move into a flooding zone, and I don't understand why I have this issue now. So, and I've complained to, I've put in comments, I put in the pitches to the city, no one's ever gotten a hold of me or... ever gotten ahold of me or contacted me. I've tried a couple of times. Then I look online again and I'm told that the case is closed. I never even heard from anyone. So I'd like someone to contact me and try to solve it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address me at this time?
And I would just like to know, with all of the development, why do we only have five employees to cover all the swells in the entire Palm Coast area? I spoke with somebody from the swell department, well, they don't have their own department, he explained that. But I would like to know, he said the expected wait time is at least a year before they come out to look at the swells. If everybody is coming to Palm Coast, that means the city has more money coming in. Where's the money going? You surely should be able to hire more employees to take care of the problem. Okay?
Thank you for your comment. Anyone, yes, sir?
My name is Louis Jadera. I live in Three Siegel Place. I can sympathize with that lady just that was talking before about, you know, the high elevations, because I didn't think I would actually be standing here today because I'm dealing with, they're building a house behind me, and the bottom of my fence is here, and their dirt was up here about three feet. And when I asked the guy that was, you know, doing the dirt, trying to level, I said, that's not going to stay like that, is it? He goes, oh, yeah. You're going to get all the water coming in to your, I said, I said, what are you talking about? You're going to, you're actually leaving it like that? He goes, yeah, that's what, you know, you know, it wasn't our permit or whatever, you know, the way we're supposed to build it. And I looked at the guy, I says, look, look at the lot next to you, they just built this house, just a few months ago it finished, and it was leveled with the fence. Now, then they built one behind me in the corner, and that thing was kind of high. So now this one's even higher than both of those. And the thing I don't understand is like, aren't these builders being accountable for what, the way they're building this stuff and what they're doing? Because I mean, right across the street on Sea Trail, they have all these new houses they just built. And it seems like, it seems like they all go across. And I mentioned that when I went to the, to talk to somebody in Stormwater. And I told him, I said, you know, you go there and just see it, you'll see these houses are almost perfectly leveled. Why is it, I know you have codes and everything, why does it seem to be different everywhere you go? You know, and it's like, when my sister-in-law was building a house next to me, it was being built by Seagate. And I told them, I noticed it was this much lower, and I said, hey, aren't you guys going to put some dirt there, at least level it? You know, make it go, I know you got to make it go to the street or the swell. And they didn't really care. So they left, now she looks like she has, when it rains really hard, it's like a swimming pool in the back of her house. And I'm just saying, you know, I don't get why these builders are not being accountable, making sure that, you know, just build it so, I think there's a better way than just, you know, building a high there, low here, high there. It seems like it's, you know, crazy everywhere.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address me at this time? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Paula Poulain, and I live at 45 Ballard Lane. I am an insurance agent. I have been an insurance agent for about 15 years. I keep hearing everyone say, we live in a flood zone. The whole state of Florida is a flood zone. You can live in the X zone, or you can live in the AE AV, but the whole state is a flood zone. And in fact, a 41 of 22, that all changed. It's geo-grading now. When we do quotes, that's how they do it, okay? But I just wanted to clarify the flood zone thing. And then another thing, my house never flooded until the house next door to me was built. And I filed, the whole time that house was built, I filed 16 cases, tickets, okay? And then I thought, when the house went in next door, it was high, my friends were like, what are they going to do about it? And I was like, I asked the real estate agent, I asked the city to help me, nothing. So I put in gutters, okay? It seemed to all puddle right there. So the two ladies from the city came out on the 18th, and they said, you know, to do drainage. So my boyfriend and I, we dug drainage. So right now, I'm hoping that this will work at my property, but something has got to be done about the flooding and making it accountable and making it better for the residents. We all spend hard-earned money. I've spent over $2,500 right now on my yard. And I was single before this, and it's getting like ridiculous, and it's going to affect my foundation, my driveway, and something has to be done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Was there still another speaker?
I have a separate issue, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Darlene Chelli, Hidden Lakes, Palm Coast. December 19th, there was a council business meeting in which Cascades had requested for a rehearing.
Now, we have a, we have an agenda item coming up on that issue. Could you hold your comment till that agenda item comes up?
This doesn't pertain to that, it pertains to...
You mentioned it, go ahead.
And they were granted that rehearing, which I believe is on the agenda today. I requested a rehearing and had sent a letter timely, as did Mr. Cimento on his request for a rehearing, sent a request on 12/27 within the 10 business days required for a rehearing. RE, request for rehearing of the Old Kings Row multifamily master site plan, addressed to Ms. Bevan, Mr. Scheiner. As allowed under the Palm Coast Land and Development Code 2.16D, we, the aggrieved residents of Toscana and Hidden Lakes HOA communities, request for a rehearing of Resolution 2023 XX, the Old Kings multifamily master site plan, application 5447. That was heard on December 19th, 2023, and we allege that the city council has overlooked and misapprehended some facts, and that documents submitted in the application packet were incomplete, erroneous, and/or fraudulent. In addition, we request rehearing on the grounds that proper notice was not provided to the abutting residents in the Toscana or Hidden Lakes as claimed by the applicant. So that was the criteria that met your requirement for a rehearing for Cascades, per the developer. And Mr. Elfin, you had requested that we rush that through as quickly as humanly possible or something in those terms. But I have yet to receive an answer on my request for a rehearing based on the exact same evidence. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker? Yes, sir.
Yes.
Either one. Go ahead, just queue up there, that's fine. Stay there.
Hi, my name is John, I'm from, I live in the P section, just off Pepperdine. And I wasn't planning on speaking, but I just wanted to, I don't know if I can approach you.
If you would, just add to the clerk, okay?
That's my backyard.
Please, go ahead.
About four or five times a year, I have a lake in my backyard. And I'm in Pepperdine in P section, I'm not in the Mondex. So this is something that, the house just to the right of that is four feet above the, my property, all right? The infrastructure is, needs to be addressed terribly in this city. I'm a bus driver, school bus driver, we got a couple of other school bus drivers here. And we are so overcrowded on buses. We have three to a seat with middle school and high school kids, and it's just, it's terrible. And Seminole Woods is the worst. Constant people going back, needing to go back to pick up more kids. So I need you to address the infrastructure before we add new homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, my name is Anna Eiseman. I am a two-and-a-half, three-year resident, and I live on the East section. And what brings me tonight is the concern for the rapid growth that this city is experiencing. It appears that within the last two or three years, there's been approval for about 14,000 new homes that are being built. And when I look at some of the developments, my understanding is a lot of these homes are stick homes or wood homes. I know this area has been very fortunate that there hasn't been a lot of hurricanes that have affected the area. But we came from South Florida, we live in Weston, West of Lauderdale, and we experienced the destruction that that area south of us had after Andrew. So if this area was to be hit by one of those strong hurricanes, and we have all these stick homes, wood homes, inexpensive construction being built, do you realize the kind of a mess that the city is going to have, having to clean that? I'm not going to say that every community should be at Toscana or Grand Haven or Hidden Lakes, but I think there has to be a little bit more thought given to the type of developments that are being allowed in this area. In addition to that, there's 28,000, approximately 28,000 orders being driven by those 14,000 homes that are moving here. Let's say everyone has two cars. So when you look at Palm Coast, the main order is, are pretty narrow. You have Belter, you have Palm Coast Parkway. So what's going to happen to this area when you have all these new residences coming, all these people driving homes? Some of the roads need a lot of care, and they are not being done. To be honest with you, I question the decision we made of coming here, although my husband did the proper research. And when we came to see it, it seemed like a beautiful city, great beaches, nice environment. But now that we are here, there's a lot of concerns about all this fast growth that is taking place. The other area that is very concerning to me is the lack of medical care. Yes, we have a new second hospital, which is a wonderful thing, but I don't think that there is enough primary care physicians, there is not enough specialists. I just had to research a neurologist for my mother, and I was, was it, no, I'm sorry, an endocrinologist. I had to go 72 miles away from here to find somebody. I mean, that just doesn't make sense to me. Unfortunately, I come from a very spoiled area, I had Cleveland Clinic outside my house for 10 minutes. So we had all the care that we could find. So I don't know if this belongs to your area of expertise, but we need to see about getting better doctors and more specialists into this area and rethink all this development we're doing.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Are there any remaining speakers?
I have one other thing. Paula, I live in Ballard Lane, and my dog was sick the other day, and I had to either drive an hour this way or an hour that way to get help. There's 102,000 people that live here, and we have no emergency care vet on staff anywhere. And that seems to be a problem. I just wanted to see if that could be addressed.
Thank you for your comment. Okay.
I have a follow-up comment to Kathy's question about the sound system.
Is this a different comment that you made earlier?
No.
It's the same comment?
No, no, this is different.
Okay.
This is, Kathy Ostrino made a comment about the sound system, okay? And I volunteered several months ago to come in and troubleshoot it. I'm not an expert, I'm knowledgeable, I run church sound, I've been to several churches fixing their sound systems, training people, I've even been to the VFW helping their sound systems, Ed knows about that. So, so no one's ever gotten back to me about coming in and trying to look at your system, see if I can do something about it, no charge. So I'm offering my service again for someone to get back to me, and I'll come in and look at your sound system, see if I can make it better for you. And the other thing I want to just mention is quickly that when you submitted an issue to Streets Department, they say, okay, we assigned it, here's your number, and we're looking into it. And then next thing you know, you get a comment that, email says, it's completed, it's not completed. So someone's triggering the completed email prematurely. So if they could look into that and get that stated.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to comment at this time? Seeing no one, yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I know, I'm short. I've been a resident in Palm Coast for over...
Please just introduce yourself so...
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Gina Hall. I live at 21 Packard Lane. I've been a resident there for over 30 years. My house was built in 1989, when there pretty much were no regulations. I've been told my house was built in a hole. So I had experienced flooding in the past, so much so that I spent over $20,000 grading, putting in my own swells, digging trenches during the lightning and thunder, trying to get the water to not come into my pool and flood my house. It's been an ordeal. Okay, with that being said, I finally, after buying two subpumps, both sides of my yard, putting up gutters and all of the grading, finally could sleep at night, not waking up in the middle of the night when it rained to see if my yard was flooded or the water was coming into my house. I was fine, everything was fine, I did all that. Now they're building a house behind me. This house is way higher than my yard and my neighbors. I spoke with the gentleman who was grading the lot, and he said that, you're going to flood, that one's going to flood, this one's going to flood, and that one's going to flood, definitely. I said, well, why are you doing this, then? He said, well, it's according to our regulations, according to plan, we're doing it the right way. I said, well, let's have some common sense here, let's look and see what you're putting us through. That last rain that we had a couple of weeks ago, I had flooding in places I never had before because my subpumps were taking care of my side yards. Now my backyard's all flooded. I put in a case, city came, two nice women, I said, I promise I won't yell at you, and my frustration taken out on you. They said to me that, I'm trying not to get upset here, what they said was, they use certain amount of measurements to see how far high up the street you should be, the dirt, and if it was within code, it was, it was fine. However, they never had anything in place for someone to come at that point, when they were grading a lot, to see if it was within regulation. You can definitely see where the dirt from the house behind me stops, and then it goes down, and that's where I had all my flooding in my back. I said, let's use some common sense, can you cease and desist of this building, let's be proactive here, and let's stop it at this point, see what they're doing. You can actually see by eye that it's higher in the front of their house than it is in the back. Section 24.158 says that all lots should be graded so that the water goes into the swell in the front of the house. It's not going to happen with this house. So I plead, please stop, please come, please stop this building until you can figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else want to make a public comment at this time? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment now. And we move to the next...
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Normally, we, we have comments about what we've heard, time we normally do it. I just want to ask our city manager, bring us up to date. I'm sorry, sorry, folks. I just want to ask our city manager first to bring us up to date on the whole flooding situation. I also want to know where we are in changing some of these regulations to prevent this in the future.
Yes, for the benefit of the public and city council, we are providing weekly updates as part of these already scheduled meetings. And we are definitely working very diligently to get out to every one of these homes, and I'm grateful to hear that we've had staff visit some of these homes. I did prepare for an update tonight, but I would actually ask for Carl Cody to come up, excuse me, and give some updates on numbers. Next steps does involve our technical manual, and we're in the process of updating that. I believe it was February, we were coming back to city council, if that's, my memory serves me correctly.
Coming back to us with proposals in February?
Yes.
Yeah, I can give you a little more detail on that backup. We've currently, as of this morning, we're at 125 cases, and we've been out to 50 of those cases at this point in time. We should be through all of those cases or most of them by the end of January, and our goal is to bring all the findings back to council at the workshop. The technical manual update has been sent out, and we had a meeting with the Home Builders Association, we received... We received very minimal feedback. We're planning, seeking additional feedback from them and we will be bringing those updates to council at that same time with all the proposed changes so we can implement it after that workshop meeting in February.
Carl, what is the date? What date are we coming back?
It's the workshop in February. I don't know the exact date offhand. Is it the-
City Manager, do you know what date it is?
16th or 13th, maybe?
February the 13th. Okay.
Yes.
So you'll have compiled the data from the visits and have suggestions and technical reports going forward as of that date. You'll present that to the city council.
Yeah, and update on the legal items that were brought up last time we presented.
All right, thank you. And is it your, is it your plan to obviously meet as many, if not all, of the cases that have been presented to you?
Yes, I believe we've contacted all of them. I think there's six of them awaiting to hear back from to schedule appointments.
Assuming they're available, yeah.
But yes, our goal is to hit all of those 125 or as many as we can. So we'll have the bulk of the data when we come back to the workshop.
Very good. So Vice Mayor, I would think you would agree that this has been elevated to a priority higher than anything else that we can do at this point in time. Fine.
Public an update. And if there's anyone who's here who's having this problem, who has not made us aware of it, please speak to Carl or someone who's in the back row.
Well, no, no, let's CC Brittany and make sure that we've got that card. Yes, very good.
Brittany, please CC Brittany to get on the list.
Okay.
And if I may-
Carl, thank you.
Mayor, if I, one more point, just about the necessary geoproximity about our cell phone tower master wireless plan to the impacted dead zones essentially. Just wanted to reiterate how critical it is to have these new cell phone towers geoproximally located near where the service areas are. And it's an unfortunate event that we have near the golf course right now that there's not much property available. But if we want to solve the problem of not having cell phone coverage, we need to have a tower in the geoproximity area of the dead zone. And I just wanted to reiterate that fact. If we have a tower somewhere else around town, it won't supplement the dead zone that we're trying to, you know, basically add coverage to. So I just wanted to reiterate that fact. I know I spoke to some people in the audience about that prior. I just wanted to reiterate that, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Clufus.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First, for anybody who's experiencing flooding, I would ask that do the comment card, please, by all means, but you're also welcome to email me. Anybody who has knows that they've made it on the list, that I've tried to follow up with everybody who does email me. So please do that as well if you want to make sure, if you feel like you've been overlooked and you want to make sure you're not, you're welcome to email me as well. With regards to the wait on the technical manual update, I'm gonna make a motion that we stop infill lot building until that's done. If foundations-
Please have respect for the speaker.
Have his respect.
Please, otherwise, I will adjourn the meeting. So let's keep it going.
If foundations have been poured, I understand that we should not, I candidly do not think that we should stop that because they've spent money and reliance on our current code. But if foundations have not been poured, there's no harm, I don't believe, or I believe that the harm to our current residents potentially is outweighed by any harm in waiting 60 to 90 days until we update this technical manual. So I'm gonna make a motion that we stop infill lot building where foundations have not been poured for 90 days and then we can revisit where we are on the update to our technical manual.
I'm going to second your motion just for topic of conversation here so we can discuss it because I think it's a little more complex than just stopping because we have folks that have cleared lots-
Hold on, hold on. All right, so Councilwoman Pontieri, you've made a motion. Could you restate the motion for me, please?
Certainly. The motion is to pause infill lot building, new infill lot building for 90 days to give us the opportunity to update our technical manual, at which time we will revisit whether or not the technical manual has been updated. And at that time, we can decide whether or not we want to extend the pause or go ahead and remove it.
Okay, so the first half is a motion. Okay, is there a second?
I made a second.
Okay, so with a motion and a second, let's open it up for discussion by city council members.
So I wanna, I wanna make sure that we make it a little more specific. If someone has cleared a lot and is about to pour that foundation and there is a buyer waiting for a house to be completed, I think we have to take that into consideration too. In other words, if, you know, you sold your house and you're waiting. So I think what we would need to do is to make sure that that lot was not going to be overfilled and make an exception if that's the case. If they're doing it the normal way, I'm good with making an exception. I think 60 days will be more than adequate because they're gonna be back here next month.
Well, I understand what you're-
Or at least we can maybe say if they come back next month and we're happy with it, we'll suspend it then. You know what I mean?
All right, let's go one at a time. Okay, so there's a motion, a second, discussion. Additional discussion by city council members.
Well, I wanted to make a comment, but after this is cleared.
Well, this is the discussion period.
Okay, well, I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out tonight. And I do want to share that I was out and I met with Mrs. Carol Brasdale earlier today because I too have a huge concern about the problem with the lots. And you people would not be out here tonight if there was not a huge concern about this. There's a lot of people that are out here tonight that this is a big concern. And me, as a city council member, I almost wanted to come and sit out there tonight because I need to feel what you feel. And that is the truth. And I know that this is a big issue throughout the community because I'm in the community all the time. I talk to people from the community all the time and I'm hearing the same story over and over and over. And I'm actually asking people, well, please don't attack me because it's not my fault. I'm looking forward to something being done about this. So I feel like us, as council members, we need to listen to our citizens and our residents in this area.
Thank you, Sean. Okay. Councilman Clufus, any comment?
Yeah, absolutely. I think if we have the council support, I mean, there's obviously an issue here, but I think it deserves more insight. And if we can have some staff present or maybe an art city manager, talk about the numbers behind what we're talking about doing here. I think that is also relevant. Also, all of the residents who spoke tonight, I assure as heck hope that they are listed on our matrix of houses and properties that need attention. So I think last time we spoke, at the last council meeting, I think the number was like below 30, if it was correct, below 30. I believe it was 26.
26, they said.
Now, I almost feel like we have 26 people in this room that feel like that they have had a problem.
All right, please.
So I feel like we need to hear from staff on potential blanket solution or fix that we're talking about here for 26 different cases. Maybe we can have additional comments from our staff about what exactly is going on with these cases and have a list of the 26 homes that are still actually having problems. I think just having a blanket, basically a moratorium on development in Palm Coast is a little bit of a heavy blanket solution. But I think the public and our council, we deserve more of an insight and a direct line from our staff on what exactly is going on and where we stand with this. So even if we had a 60-day moratorium on in-lot development, it doesn't really tell us what's going on right now, right? So let's hear from staff. I mean, obviously, there's a problem here, right? But let's hear from our staff to see whether or not that problem reconciles with what we're talking about today. Because unless we have a proper understanding of what exactly numerically is going on out in our, and let's see if there's a discretion between the both of them. This isn't crazy talk. This is just, let's talk about the facts.
All right, thank you, Councilman Clufus. Councilwoman Pontieri, did you have another comment?
I just want to respond-
And then I gotta ask the attorney for an opinion.
Yeah, and I do want to hear from our city attorney as well, but I do want to respond to my colleagues' concerns. So I share your concerns with regards to making sure we are not overstepping and that's why I want to put a timeline on it. I'm not proposing a building moratorium across the city of Palm Coast. What I'm proposing is that we make sure that until our technical manual is updated, because obviously, we recognize that it can be better. We can be mitigating some of these issues, perhaps preventing a lot of these issues by updating our technical manual. So I think that while we do that, we are only endangering more of our residents by allowing more building, recognizing that we have an issue, to your point, Councilman Clufus. So I think that a 90-day pause while we fix this is not overstepping, it's protecting the current residents of our city. And I understand what you're saying, Councilman Danko, about, you know, people who have cleared lots. I know if I were building my home and all of a sudden the city that I were building in said, we gotta halt this until we update our technical manual, I would be incredibly upset. But if five years from now, I were the one that had my house that was in danger of being flooded because of a new build next to me, I would be more, I think that that is what we have to put more weight on. So-
All right, you've made the point, okay.
I agree with you on that. It's a very good point. I just want to make sure that we use temporary, not moratorium or anything of that nature.
Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, let's hold for a second. I just, I need an opinion from city council here because you're starting to walk into the area of property rights, you're walking into the area of unemploying people, you're starting to get into an area that I'd like some, excuse me, I'd like to have some direction from our city attorney, so if you would.
Certainly. My comments are just limited to process and procedure. My recommendation to council would be to let staff do the legwork and that there be proper, that there be proper notice and that this be put in proper form. Because really, what in essence the motion is, is a moratorium regarding the development of infill lots. And that, in my opinion, would require a more formal action of the council by ordinance and having advanced proper notice and having public input before the council would take an action such as that. So again, my comment, just simply, Councilwoman, it goes to process. And I look at that motion as providing direction to staff to bring something back for further action of council.
So then if that's the advice of council, and I appreciate that, I would ask that that be brought back to us as far as the notice requirements and what needs to be done, whether it's a resolution and ordinance at our next meeting. I do, in looking at the meetings coming up, because I think we have a holiday, I think we only have two business meetings, if that, this month. So I have a concern in that delay. If-
Let's find out. Okay, so-
Hold on, Mayor.
City Manager, what is that delay, just so we're clear? In other words, what's the earliest that this could come back?
So our next business meeting is January 16th.
Which is not very far off.
Okay, so if this could be brought back from city attorney on January 16th so that we have the information that we need as far as what notice requirements are needed at that time, I'd appreciate it. And depending on what we can do, if there's no business meeting for the rest of the month, I would just like to put out there, I know we can't make this, actually, we can't take this action now, but I would request a special meeting to vote on this if necessary.
But we have a business meeting on the 16th. And I know you're a stickler for the legalities of what we're getting to go through. I too agree and I appreciate the request of staff to come back so that we are fully loaded with the correct information and we don't err and make a mistake that would cost every one of our residents a lot more money because we have erred on the legal side. And the 16th does not seem unreasonable. I mean, we're talking about just over two weeks away. So my personal opinion is, I prefer that. Would you be willing to withdraw your motion in favor of this procedure?
I'd be willing to table it until the 16th.
I'd like to make one more comment along these lines, too. Before we move forward, what I'm looking for from staff is the solutions that rewriting our code or the additional verbiage, whatever we're modifying, would have solved for these 26 cases that we are still pending and some of the cases that were closed.
25, 25.
And if it doesn't, then obviously, we're not working hard enough to be able to rewrite something that's going to be a solution. If we don't have a solution to this rewrite that would solve the outstanding issues, then we're kind of putting a cart before a horse. But let's find out right at this next meeting, give time for staff. I understand that it's kind of out of the blue. But we need to look at the current properties that are having these issues and see whether or not our adaptations are going to actually fix the problem, right? We're looking for a solution. Let's have those properties brought before us and let's have our staff tell us if we rewrote our ordinance to this manner, that these would not have occurred. And I think that would be a satisfactory level for our residents, but also us, to understand that the difference we're going to make is actually a positive change. Otherwise, we're just changing verbiage for verbiage. We need to hear from our staff that the changes we're going to make would have actually prevented the issues that we are experiencing today.
Thank you, Councilman. So your request is to table your motion until the next, I have a little guidance here.
Yeah, no, I would recommend amending the main motion to require staff to bring it back at your-
Could that just, could the motion be amended to be considered at the next business meeting? Could you add to your motion that we will consider your motion along with its second at the January 16th meeting?
Certainly, I'm happy to amend it.
And I'm happy to stick with the second.
So we have the motion and the second amended. Does the clerk have that? And that gives staff enough time, obviously, to accelerate the number of residents that have an issue. It also helps us, you know, I'll make this one comment, that there's a general problem here and we're very much aware of it. And as I mentioned earlier, we've raised it to the highest priority that we can. But we also have to understand that every single one of these lots has a different issue and a slightly custom problem which has to be addressed. So the solution will probably end up being many in number. So I think the delay to the 16th is prudent and we will be able to make a decision at that meeting. So I'll go through each one of you. Is this acceptable to you, Vice Mayor?
It's acceptable, as I just want to make sure that, I'm sure staff understands how important this is.
Of course.
And we need to come up with a solution. And as Councilman Clufus said, we actually, you know-
Yeah, as I said, multiple solutions. It's not one individual problem.
And for the future, though.
Okay.
I mean, with future builds in these infill lots, we definitely have to do something and change what's happening now.
Agreed.
Because it's not working.
Agreed.
So with that, I'm good with this.
Councilwoman Pontieri, okay?
Yes, I'm okay with that. And I want to thank Councilman Clufus. I just want to make sure, I know there's a lot of passion and emotion because these are your homes, but I appreciate the perspective from Councilman Clufus and your concerns and what you want to make sure of. So I'm fine with this, but thank you as well.
Councilwoman Hyder, okay?
Fine, thank you.
Councilwoman Clufus. Okay, City Manager, this puts you on a very tight timeline, so, you know, no holds barred here. Let's elevate this to a level that on the 16th, we are in a decision-making solution problem.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, very good. All right, with that, we have finished a public comment.
Vote or it's just, it's just a consensus? We have a motion and a second. Do we actually need to vote?
The motion's been tabled. No? That's what I heard.
No, amended to extend.
Amended to extend, my apologies. Okay, all in favor, please say, I'm sorry. So we have a motion and a second, and now I have to go back out to the public.
Yes, well-
So I would ask-
It's not final, but it's coming back on the 16th.
I understand, but it's been our precedent. So I would ask a member of the public, any comment before we move forward on this item?
What happened to the lots that are cleared that are- I really, really appreciate you bringing that up. I really do. I'd almost lost faith. And I really appreciate you seconding it. This is a very, very important issue and I'm hearing that you're hearing us finally. Just make sure you don't forget those of us that are the existing people. We're having problems too. I hear that you're hearing us and we're gonna keep organizing and feeding you the information so you can keep helping us. But we need to stop the building the way it is, make it new, a better way, so we can move forward. Our city does need to grow, but we need to grow slowly and thoughtfully.
Appreciate your comment, thank you. Anyone else before I close up public comment?
Daniel Seaman, Seminole Woods. I'm in the back listening and I agree with both of your valid points and the discussion. As an outsider, I understand that we still need to continue to build. My thought is this, from an outside standpoint and a business owner, the city, maybe for the lots that are going forward in this 14-day period and maybe even in the future, maybe maybe, and because it is going to be multiple solutions, maybe there should be somebody at the city that is specifically assigned to check these lots. So on an individual basis, I know there's a lot of lots going on, or maybe a couple people, or, you know, something along those lines, where you have somebody that has an engineering background and a land development background, or something along those lines, that can go to these lots and say, "The grade for this lot is too high. The grade for this lot is perfect. The grade for this lot is too high," or whatever, so that when they're in these neighborhoods, because Palm Coast isn't a flat piece of property. There's neighborhoods that are really high, there's neighborhoods that are lower, and on an individual, you know, you have two houses that have been there for 20 years, and you go to build one in the middle and it's, let's say, two, three foot higher, where's all the water going? You know, gravity, pshoo, it goes right to those other two houses. So something along those lines probably should be, I don't know if it's a position, that's not really my department to figure out, but if we're going to have a 14-day hold and so that we can have the city look at it and all that, maybe there just needs to be a little more discretion on the stuff that's being filled right now before, you know, I know those guys are busy, I get it, but maybe they should go out and be looking at the current code that we have and maybe looking at the solutions that they might be coming up with and going, "Hey, this one needs to stop until we adjust it because it's going to flood this house or flood that house." Just at least, you know, until we come up with an idea or a, a solution that's going to be beneficial for everybody, the people that have been here for a long time and also the ones that we're inviting in to be part of our community. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comment.
I've been, not a builder officially, but I've built four homes.
Just please introduce yourself again.
Oh, name is Robert Meyer, 117 South Coker's Hawk Way. I've built several homes in the last 30, 30 years, and in the business I was in, typically a situation like this, and I agree, it's great to see that you're digging into this, but be careful you don't try to solve everything before you take advantage of some of the low-hanging fruit. Because there's probably only, my own personal opinion is, there's probably only one or two things that can capture 80 or 90% of the problem. And, and once you get that first, then you need to take some steps to at least take care of the 80 or 90% and then continue to work on the balance. So don't, don't get hung up if you get an opportunity to take the big, because I do agree, one solution is not going to satisfy everything. And thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, ma'am, coming up.
Teri Ventrelli, Seminole Woods. I just wanted to make a comment that when Lynn came out to my property, she did acknowledge the fact that the city is now going to be looking at surrounding properties when they approve the site plans for homes that are under construction, which totally makes sense. However, she did tell me that that did not include homes that were on the diagonal. Homes that were to the left, to the right, and behind were the only ones that were going to be taken into consideration. And the next property that's been the catalyst for all of the major flooding in my property is on the diagonal. It's a D.R. Horton construction at 56 C Trail. It's extremely high. My brother-in-law has complained about it once, they came out and lowered it a little bit, it's still very high, and I know that Lynn took pictures of the lot to, to, to evaluate it. But I'm the only person that it's, is going to impact, yet it's not going to be taken into consideration when they look at how it's going to impact my home, because I'll be off the table, I'm on the diagonal. So I think that there needs to be a little bit broader scope on how they review the surrounding lots because those properties do drain into our land as well. And then I'm also concerned about how many builders are going to rush to put their foundations in the next two weeks, so they can avoid this potential moratorium. Just a thought, thank you.
I thank you for your comment.
Good evening, my name's Melissa Caballero. I live on C Trail in Seminole Woods. You keep talking about that there's only 26 cases. I'm going to tell you, I've already put two cases in and they're already closed. My mother has done the same, I actually put another one in for her, so I'm not sure where you're getting the numbers, but if they keep closing cases, then of course you don't have the accurate number. My home was built in 2005, I didn't move to Palm Coast until 2011. We've never had any issues of flooding, and the last two hurricanes, I had water coming up through my foundation into my dining room, and the water just kept coming, coming, coming. We had mops, buckets, I mean, while we're going through a hurricane, I had to get different fans, different companies to come out, because obviously I definitely don't want mold in my home. And this issue still hasn't been fixed. I had to spend over $8,000 just to put a French drain on the side of my home going to the front of my house. So on one half in the front of my house, I had to pay. Why? I never had any issues with flooding. Now all of a sudden, you built all these homes around me, and I have water that comes into my home. I'm an educator in Flagler County Schools, so obviously you know that I don't bring home a huge paycheck. So to be able to keep pouring money like that because of an issue that the city has made is, is just ridiculous.
Thank you. Any remaining speakers?
Hi, Scott Shidell. I just wanted to-
Just pull it-
What's that?
Just pull it closer to me, thank you.
Is that better? My name is Scott Shidell, and yeah, just wanted to mention that, yeah, this bold action you're taking is, is pretty remarkable, that you're considering doing this, and appreciated. And also, you know, you mentioned having the staff get involved and, and all that. And all I was going to suggest is that also, if possible, consider looking at other outside experts on this situation because you have a colossal problem. And, okay, it's going to take time to do this implementation and see the results, and then if we don't do it right, a year later, we have a whole bunch, another several hundred houses being built, and several thousand people more getting flooded out if we don't do this right. So I just say, please take the opportunity to reach out and, you know, to other experts and stuff like that as well in the, in the process.
Thank you for your comment.
Jeremy Davis, P Section. Councilman Clufus, it's way over 26, Carl just came up and said-
He said, sir, address me.
Oh, sorry, he said 26, Carl came up here and said 125 cases. I just, I want that to be reiterated, that it's growing, because just last month was 26, that's where you're right on that. It is now 125 according to Carl, right?
Correct.
So-
Thank you.
I think we all need to not think about putting it to the city staff members who are all connected to real estate, such as you people. I think that's a conflict of interest for us home people, that, that, that are the residents. I find that very, very odd that you want to just ping pong it back and forth. Enough.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other speakers at this time? Seeing no one, seeing no one come forward, I will close public comment, and I will call a vote. So is everyone still familiar with the motion? Anyone need it repeated? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now move to the next item on the agenda, which are minutes from prior meetings. I would ask for a motion to approve the minutes of the City Council meeting held on December the 19th, 2023. It was a business meeting.
I will make that motion.
Vice Mayor has made a me, a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Pontieri has made a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? Does the clerk have the count?
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We now move to Section F on the agenda, which would be ordinances of the second read. Counselor, if you would be so kind as to read in number two for me, please.
Okay, this is Old Kings Village Comprehensive Plan Amendment, application number 55-05. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the City of Palm Coast 2035 Comprehensive Plan, as previously amended, pursuant to Section 163 Florida statutes, amending the future land use map, flume designation for approximately 62.3 acres of certain real property from Flagler County, designation of residential low density and commercial low intensity to City of Palm Coast designation of residential and mixed use, as described in more detail in the legal description, which is an exhibit to this ordinance, with site-specific policy to limit development to 210 dwelling units and 30,000 square feet of non-residential use, providing for conflicts, ratification of prior acts, codification severability, and an effective date. As noted in the title, Mayor, this is a legislative matter of the City Council. The Council previously took action under the statutory process on October 17th, 2023, went to the state of Florida, no objections or comments from the state of Florida. It's now being presented as an adoption hearing item, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Gentlemen, you have a, a summary to present?
Mayor, we just want to just probably repeat what was presented at the December 5th meeting where this item was continued. Again, this is for the second reading of a future land use map amendment for Old Kings Village, about 63 acres vacant, approved as a Flagler County PUD for 232 residential units and 36,000 square feet of commercial use.
Mr. Papa, do me a favor, just bring the mic a little bit closer for us.
I'm sorry. So again, the amendment would be to change the bulk of the property to about 60 acres to residential and about two and a half acres to mixed use, with a note on the future land use map to limit development to 210 residential units and 30,000 square feet of non-residential uses. We previously provided you with analysis of finding, having no significant impacts on the environmental resources here. The proposed designations are generally consistent with surrounding land uses. The amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan policy, other comprehensive plan policies, and of course, infrastructure will be brought in to accommodate the property. The planning board did hold a public hearing on this item and did recommend that the City Council find the comprehensive plan, this comprehensive plan amendment, consistent with the comprehensive plan. And we recommend approval from Flagler County Residential Low Density and Commercial Low Intensity to the city designation of residential mixed use with those site-specific policies previously outlined by staff. I believe the applicant is here to answer any questions, and this is just for the future land use map amendment. We do have a companion zoning map amendment, which will come after this.
Does City Council have any questions of the applicant at this time?
I'll reserve my time for after public comment.
My only question was for staff. I know, Mayor, at the last meeting, you had some concerns because you had not been able to read the letter from the county that was written, or that was, I think, signed by their city, or their county manager, Haida Petito. There were some concerns that the county had with regards to this development. I just want to make sure that those concerns have been allayed or discussed with staff, or whether or not staff had any remaining concerns. Again, when we annex property in from the county, we just want to make sure we're not undermining the county in any way, clashing with them, we want to make sure we're working with them. So are there any remaining concerns that staff sees with this flume amendment that were voiced in that letter? Or Mayor, are you satisfied that there are no concerns?
Well, first, I would say, I would direct your question to staff. Staff, you followed up with that, and are there any remaining issues for discussion with the county regarding this transfer?
Okay, we, we reviewed the letter from the, the county, and it touched on a wide variety of items, and, and one of the things, actually, the person that prepared it, I believe, was Adam Mengele, their Community Development Director. So they had a planned unit development, and by law, you are allowed to put conditions of approval on there, just like our master plan development, we, we do. And it's a negotiated type thing, staff negotiates with the applicant, goes to the planning board, it might get changed, comes to City Council, and might get changed again. So in this case, the applicant has applied for straight rezonings, so that does not allow us to place conditions of approval on there. We have to fall back on our land development code. So one of the things, for instance, was they wanted a 25-foot landscape buffer along Old Kings Road. Okay, our land development code does require that. Another big item was tree preservation, and that is in the process of their arborist, working with the city's arborist and landscape architect to make sure that they're preserving the right amount of trees in the proper location, so they can meet that part of the tree preservation department. Additionally, there's a master, subdivision master plan has been submitted to the city that goes to the planning board, it's penciled in for the January 17th planning board, that's at 5:30 PM. They, they are showing that they're meeting a 25-foot buffer along Secretariat Lane. They're also providing a buffer to the north against the county property, and that's just a county access road that's going into a future park. There's also, uh, let's see, there's also a, an agreement. So we had a neighborhood meeting on December 13th. I attended, as well as another planner from the city, and the applicant attended, as well as the applicant's attorney and engineer, and the, the neighbors had attended, as well as the neighbor's attorney. So they have a draft agreement that is sort of like, I guess, a football analogy, it's down on the one or two yard line, waiting to get punched in, but it's still not over into the end zone. So that would take care of some of the other issues that were in the, some of those might be additional issues, but other ones were in that PUD that affected the neighbors on the five-acre lot, so those were incorporated into it. So in summary, I could probably say that 75 to 80% of the issues will be taken care of through the, presuming that the agreement gets assigned, the subdivision master plan gets approved, and through the other elements of the land development code. So sorry for a lengthy answer, but-
So, Councilwoman, let me get back to the question you posed to me. So there are additional steps that are forward in the timeline. As an example, the preservation of trees, that's not concluded yet because it's not at that timeline yet, but it will be. So the question that the Councilwoman posed to me was, when you get to the end of the timeline, will there be any remaining issues with the county? I have met with the county administrator, and she brought no issues to my attention.
And one I did fail to bring up that was very important was the, they are dedicating 10 feet of land along the east side of Old Kings Road, and they have agreed to construct that, it's either an eight or 10-foot hike and bike trail along the front of their property.
So, so that has been agreed upon, that that's getting done? Because I know that that was a big concern in that letter.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
Does that, does that get you?
That answers my question.
Okay. Questions?
Were there any other material changes between first reading?
Are there any other key items outstanding?
Yeah.
Not that I'm aware of, I know that the, the one, one issue is still, there's a, a lot that's on the northeast corner of the property, so if you come down Secretariat Lane and you have the subdivision bulb or bubble there, directly to the north, there's like a one-acre lot that is part of the subdivision, but it's sort of not. So they're just calling it a tract and not a lot. And the Secretariat Lane, my understanding is it's a private road owned by the Polo Club, and they do not want access to that property there for that one-acre lot. They also want a fence up there, and at the neighborhood meeting, I thought we had a consensus on how- I thought we had a consensus on how that fence was going to be there. So the, the last neighbor on Secretariat Lane, on the very north, next to that vacant lot, I believe they have two deaf children, and they were concerned, so they wanted a, a fence there. And they, they, the neighbor, the rest of the neighbors do not want people from, let's say, the public park that are going back there, maybe on ATV or something like that, or even just walking back there, or people from this community walking around and coming through that lot back into their community.
Yeah.
So that issue, I, I think the, by the time we get done tonight on the zoning part, I think maybe we'll have a consensus between the two attorneys on that.
Okay, understood. Because I know that was brought up multiple times.
Counselor, did you have another comment at this time? Does the applicant want to address the issues that Mr. Hoover brought forward? We're interested in knowing, and we'll go back to the councilwoman's, if there's any outstanding issues that...
Michael Schmento for the...
Or when they will be resolved, is really what my question is.
Michael Schmento for the applicant. This is, I think, our third time here on this comp plan and rezoning. We left last time because there were some loose ends that we wanted to work with the neighborhood, and we had a neighborhood meeting after that. And we have an agreement. Mr. Bear's here to represent them and talk to you all about it. But as it relates to the comprehensive plan amendment, staff has found it consistent. As it relates to the zoning, staff has found it consistent. As it relates to this agreement, there's just one outstanding issue, and that is between the lot owner of Lot 34 and the HOA, as to the exact location of where that fence is. They want it there, we want it here. But remember that the agreement has also increased buffers, limited comm. 2 to comm. 1 at the request of many. We've provided them with easements for the signages. We've moved the fence off our property line back 25 feet on average, closer on us, so that from the eastern exposure of that fence, it'll all be natural vegetated, so that those homeowners on the five-acre lots will hopefully see, as it grows in, a natural buffer, as they see today. So other than that, I think we're fine. I've worked with Adam Mengele on this, some of those other things that will come through in the master subdivision plan and preliminary plat at the next phase, which hopefully will be this month, and if not. But I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant's attorney right now? Does the, the residence attorney want to address any of the questions that were just posed? And the question on the floor is, are there any remaining items that would be contrary to the county's understanding of how this property moves forward?
Well, Mr. Mengele, Dennis Bear, on behalf of Polo Club West Homero Association, Mr. Mengele raised a number of issues. We agree with a lot of them. You know, ideally, the property should remain in a PUD. It gives a lot more control for the city, as you already heard from your staff. We, in good faith, have been trying to resolve some of the outstanding issues. We talked about it at the last meeting. I was concerned about the holidays causing disruptions. We finally got a second revised agreement back this afternoon. They had a lot of issues that we weren't ready to deal with. The one big issue is this, they're now calling it a reserve lot. And what they're showing on their amended site plan is actually a fence that will cut off that reserve lot from the rest of the development. So essentially going to be creating a landlocked parcel, was then going to try to seek access through Secretariat, which is privately owned. But we don't know where it's going to come from because it's not identified on the property. So that's a significant issue. And if you recall, the main reason, one of the main reasons we wanted that reserve parcel, which kind of sticks out like a big thumb at the end of the proposed subdivision, that there's a family with two deaf children that lives right in that corner lot. So the fence is going to be on one side, but no fence on the other side. There's concerns about safety, as you've heard from your staff. We thought at the agreement that we all attended, that we had an agreement that the fence would go up and around to the corner of that lot. And today, we found out that that was not going to be the case. So we think that's still a significant issue. There's a couple of other language issues that Mr. Schmento and I talked about this evening, but we do not have an agreement. And if we don't have an agreement, I'll reserve my additional comments as to why we think that the future land use map amendment should be denied in a few minutes. Thank you.
I have a question. Sir?
Mr. Bear?
Sorry?
On that fence, and I've been out to the property, you're saying that you've got an agreement for one side of the fence, but not around the rest of the, that one property with the folks that have deaf children? Is that correct?
Correct. So, and I apologize, I thought maybe we'd have an overhead to show it. I can, I can pull out the...
Well, my question is, there's nothing preventing those people from putting in their own fence, is there?
No.
Solving the problem?
Well, but again, you're, you're putting in a, you're putting in a development that is 10 times more dense in lot size than my clients' existing five-acre lots. So they're the ones that are creating the incompatibility. If they're coming in with five-acre lots, there'd be plenty of buffering, which would be consistent with, incompatible with what my clients have. So they're going from, you know, much smaller lots, if you look at the map, than the five-acre lots that my clients have. So the onus should be on the person that's creating the incompatibility to provide the buffering and provide the fencing.
Well, I understand part of the problem, too, is the person who owns that one little piece of whatever you want to call it, lot, doesn't want to sell to those folks, correct? They've tried to purchase it?
You know, the...
I mean, it's sort of landlocked, isn't it? I mean, how's anyone going to get to that one lot?
Well, they come through the subdivision. I mean, the developer owns the entire parcel. My understanding is that Mr. Cullis, who's a developer whom we all have dealt with over the years, may have some type of option or something of that sort, but he doesn't own the parcel.
Okay.
And so it's up to the developer to not create a landlocked parcel as part of this, as part of this whole application process, which is what the current plans appear to show. It doesn't show how that lot's going to have access, other than coming either through our parcel, or perhaps accessing the dirt road that the county currently has for accessing the conservation lands. So again, if they're creating the incompatibility by significantly increasing the densities, they should put in the fence around that entire parcel. That's our position.
Does that answer your question, Vice Mayor?
Kind of.
Again, Mr. Bear, was that an issue between the county and the city in terms of the transfer? It was not, right? That's something that you all have come up with since then?
Well, if this...
It's not on the, it was not on the, it was not on the county's list of issues, was it?
I don't remember, sir.
Okay.
There was talk about access through the county's access road, as I recall in Mr. Mengele's letter.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I have a question then for staff.
Yeah, go ahead.
Can this issue be addressed at the site plan phase?
That's probably the better time, is during the subdivision master plan. But as far as, you know, the planning board has the option of approving or denying. I, I'm not positive how much latitude they're allowed to have as far as going above and beyond the land development code to appease, let's say, in this case, to appease the neighbors because we have an oddball one-acre piece that's sort of setting out there. And we did, I'm not the planner working on the subdivision master plan, but they did bring up the point that this lot, if you bring a road or a driveway back there to it, it becomes a flag lot. And we have a lot of flag lots on the ITT lots, but our land development code does not allow you to create a flag lot. So they're calling it a tract. So it's just setting there a tract, and it's sort of setting on top the fence with who knows which way it's going to go.
But regardless of PLDRB's recommendation, so if it, if it goes to PLDRB with, without this entire extra, we'll call it what Mr. Bear called it, which was a thumb, regardless of whether it goes to PLDRB with the fence enclosing that entire piece or not, we still, when it comes before us, have the ability to approve or deny based on the site plan including or not including that, right? We don't, I mean, we don't have, we're not bound by PLDRB.
No. The subdivision master plan stops at the planning board.
I see.
So the, the only time you would see that would be going clear to the, and that's in my presentation. So that stops at the planning board. The, the engineer then turns in a preliminary plat and construction drawings. They, they do these improvements to the subdivision. Then they come in, and there's a final plat to the city council. And as you know, you don't have a whole lot of latitude once that subdivision has been approved that far in the process and constructed.
Anyone else question or discussion from either city staff, or from the applicant, or for the residence attorney?
So, just for clarification, if this moved forward this way, we, they wouldn't be allowed to actually run a road to it to create a flag lot. Is that what we were saying? So a flag lot essentially is a road with a single piece of property on the top. It looks like a flag, right? That's, that's where we're going with that?
No.
So they wouldn't be allowed to run a road back there to create the flag lot? So would that mean it's not actually, that like, that's not an option for it to be developed in that manner? So...
I haven't discussed it with Mr. Tyner, but the, I'm not sure how we would be able to get that approved that way. If it was a recreation tract, let's just say, then that would just be a driveway back there, and it would be common area. So if it's common area, then I don't think that, it's, it's not a lot, so it would not be a, a flag lot.
Gotcha.
So, you know, or maybe that's an area that the applicant reserves trees on, that they're required to save. So maybe some of those ideas out there can work, that maybe the neighbors and the applicant can get on the same page as far as that lot.
Understood. Okay.
Or that tract, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, from staff's point of view, how can we move this forward and put the, put the onus on the attorneys to figure out a solution on this? Do we have to move this forward today? I'm reluctant to suggest that we table it. I'm hearing about a fence. A fence gets put in, a fence can be removed. It doesn't seem to be a device worthy of, of additional negotiation, or not worthy of additional negotiation. I understand there's a neighborhood, there are, there are folks that, you know, are asking for some special consideration, which I would certainly, you know, endorse. How would city council move this forward so that we can get to that point where there better be an agreement?
If you approve the LUM amendment and the rezoning, then you're relying on your land development code in the hopes that the agreement comes about. So once the, once these two items are approved tonight, the city council is basically out of it, and we, you're sort of saying, okay, our land development code is strong enough to handle the, in the statutory requirements, to handle the needs of all these things here. And the, you know, the neighbor, the applicant has, engineer has shown, you know, some of these things on their, their subdivision master plan, such as that 10-foot. They have also, at the previous mention of city council, at the neighborhood meeting, the applicant's owner did say that they would drop the general commercial out there and switch that to neighborhood commercial. So I asked them to provide that in an email, which they did a week ago or so like that. So that's in the PowerPoint tonight, that. So they have done a lot of these things that they said they would do. I'm not sure if they sold the property to somebody else, though. Let's, you know, then, worst-case scenario, would that new person have to meet those standards on a, on a subdivision master plan? Probably not.
So Counselor, can we, can we motion forward with the stipulation that there be an agreement by both councils, that a resolution has taken place regarding this fence?
I wouldn't recommend that, only because this is a legislative action of the council, and then you would be deferring that power, or that effectiveness of that power to a private party. And I don't know if that's...
But that won't keep us in a loop, because otherwise, it's just going to PLDRB, and this way, it almost bounces back to us, no?
As a comp plan amendment, once it's approved, it has to be transmitted to the state within 10 days of approval. That's the statutory process. I mean, there are proceed, there are objectives and policies regarding compatibility with surrounding neighborhoods when the city considers future land use map amendments. I don't know all the particular details that, like, staff would, whether or not there would be some other imposed condition that is ripe to address the policies and objectives in the comp plan regarding compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood.
And your advice to city council members. So should there be a motion, and should there be a no vote? There's going to have to be an explanation as to why there is a no vote. Is that correct, from each council member? Should they vote no?
Well, again, it's a legislative matter, so the council would have to express some, you know, fairly debatable point that it doesn't comply with the criteria that's laid out. Staff did a nice job of laying it out in the agenda item. And that's the criteria that, that's, that each council member should be focusing on.
Okay. Any additional discussion by city council members before I go out to the public?
My only concern is, based on what has, so, Mr. Hoover, with your comment, I've repeatedly emphasized the point that whatever agreements have been made at the annexation phase, and now at this phase, should be binding on any successors and assigns. And I think it was represented to me, Mr. Schmento, please confirm, that that would be the case. Can we get that on the record, that that would be the case, please?
That is the case, and that is what is in the proposed agreement between the parties.
Thank you. I have no other comments.
No comment.
All right, let's open this item up to the public. Would anyone like to comment on this item at this time?
Darling Shelley, Hidden Lakes, Palm Coast. I don't live in the Polo Club, but I've been standing up here before you since 2019, telling you time and time again, 2.505, and the rights of the nearby property owners. It's not my code, it's your code. And these property owners have a right to live next to properties zoned the way they were zoned when they purchased their homes and their properties. Five-acre zones, five-acre beautiful lots, on a beautiful road, and you don't owe it to the developers to change the zone. You've done it to us on Old Kings Road, despite the evidence that it's not compatible, that it's against the public health, against the desire of the nearby residents. This is codified in our land development code, but you choose to ignore time and time again, where we pointed out, and even now, your attorney is telling you, there's issues with compatibility. You can't say that increasing the zoning is compatible with five-acre zone, homes. 212 dwelling units. We're talking about going from residential, low density, and that's what these folks have down in the Polo Club. Commercial, low density. That's, that's what was zoned when they bought their properties. That's what they put their money into, knowing that someday they'd have a low-intensity-use commercial building that they could utilize. What's this going to be? We don't know what this is going to be. They told you that they could sell this property, and it could be anything. So the dog and pony show, looks wonderful, but means nothing because it's not in stone. But, once you open Pandora's Box, and you allow this today to continue, and then you change the zone, and then it's a done deal. And then, everybody who's affiliated, with all the sales that come from it, and all the developers, and all the LLCs that changed their name on a weekly basis, benefit at the direct expense of the local residents. And quite frankly, I think it's not only unethical, but disgusting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, please. All right. Hold on a second, Mr. Bear.
Sure.
Counselor, I hear talk about zoning. We're not really discussing zoning on this ordinance, are we? are we?
We're not talking about zoning on this particular ordinance, we are discussing a change to the future land use map designation, from county residential low-density to residential with some stipulated caps. So what's at issue is the proposed amendment to the future land use map, and I pointed out that there is a compatibility provision for, for making those determinations on changing Flume maps.
Mr. Bayer, you're making a public comment now?
I am, yes sir. Members of the council, I would respectfully request that this matter be postponed until the next commission meeting, for a number of reasons. One, on both this item and the next item, if we reach an agreement, I don't have to put on competent substantial evidence to deal with the issues. We sincerely thought we would have an agreement coming in here tonight, last-minute changes that came about this afternoon, we don't have an agreement. So I've been prejudiced that we've not been able to bring in our expert to deal with the compatibility issues, which we had planned on doing, but for the fact we thought we had an agreement. But if you don't postpone it, then you're gonna be hearing quite a few comments on compatibility and other issues, that will take this meeting on for another few hours, if, if that's what you want to do. But, to me, it seems like, particularly since in, in talking to your staff earlier this evening, there are significant tree issues that have to be worked out. On this 60-plus acres of land, you have 245 specimen oak trees. Big issue. How many are gonna be protected, where are they gonna be protected? Anything we've seen so far does not address tree protection. So it seems like, not just on our agreement, but the tree issue, it, it warrants potential postponement. And I'm not doing this to delay or cause harm to Mr. Schmento or his client, but I just really think in good faith, given the seriousness of the issues, it's not just about the fence, there's a lot of other issues here that need to be addressed, that it would be postponed until the 16th.
All right, thank you for your comment. I just have a question for you before you leave the podium.
Yes, sir.
So didn't we just say a few minutes ago, that the trees were being inventoried and looked at for decision, but it's inappropriate to discuss them right now? I'm just curious as to why you inject that at this time?
Well, if you look at the application that's in your packet tonight, it talks about specimen trees-
It does, but staff has told us that's to be considered, and they're working on that now for a future date, no?
Okay, but you can certainly listen to the issues, because it's not coming back before you. So if you're willing to say, okay, go ahead and eliminate 245 specimen trees, that's your call.
I, I, I didn't hear that. Eliminate, you said eliminate 245 specimen trees?
Quite a few of them under the con, what I've seen is the current proposal and the current lot layout, the way those lots are being laid out, there's no way-
So that's your opinion, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are there any, yes sir.
Good evening, City Council, Mr. Mayor, John Duncan, Polo Club West. Thank you, Mr. Vice-Bear, for coming and visiting us, we appreciate it. I think picture's worth a thousand words, and I think what you saw definitely helped. We seem to have taken one step forward and two steps back with this. Since the last meeting, we had a very good community meeting. We all spoke, we had a great attendance by our, our residents, the developers, people were there, and we came up with some really good ideas, and it was agreed upon, in terms of how we were gonna do this. But that's where it died. And all of a sudden, no more communication, no more answered emails, no more answered phone calls, once, once we started getting it right. And so, as Mr. Bayer mentioned, all of a sudden this afternoon, we get this whole new proposal. The fence is not where we agreed it, agreed for it to be, it's a big deal. We all agreed, including the developer, on where the routing of the fence is going to be around that lot. And tonight, it was completely different, it was gone. It's like, what, what's going on here? We're going backwards. So there's, as Mr. Bayer mentioned, there's a number of issues here, and it needs to be resolved tonight, because this is the last time you guys are gonna see it. I mean, once it leaves here tonight, you know, there's, there's, there's no more, there's no more going back on these issues. So we're asking you, please, address these issues. We keep talking about it, who owns that thumb lot? I'll tell you who owns the thumb lot. GeoSam owns the thumb, thumb lot. That's part of their parcel. I mean, you look in the deed, there's no, nobody else owns it. I mean, I, I don't know what, what the big deal is on this particular lot, in terms of the question mark about who owns it. That's their lot. It's part of their development, it's part of the city of Palm Coast. So it's gotta be dealt with, it's gotta be dealt with tonight. So we're, we have never changed what we've been asking for. We have not moved the goalposts, we haven't added any more things to it, we're just trying to get these things resolved. I think the prudent thing to do, is to postpone it two more weeks, and, and tell the attorneys to get together and finish this up. And we appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else?
Robert Meyer, 117, South Cooper's Hawkway. I'm not gonna take a lot of your time, but I was listening to some of the comments that were being made, and, you know, you, you're in a tough, this council is, is in a tough position. You've gotta make some major decisions, it's gonna affect this city and county for years, for years to come. So you're just not making a decision for today, you're really making a big decision for the future. I had a manager, at the place I worked for 29 years, that was probably the best manager I'd ever had. And I used to have some pretty good ideas, but every time I came to him with an idea or a recommendation, he said, why is it a good recommendation? No matter how, he knew how good it was, or bad it was, almost, when he asked me the question. But the same question ought to be asked to you before you vote. If you vote yes, why is this a good idea for the city and for this county? If you vote no, likewise, why is this a good vote? It could be good by voting no. But either way, you need to let us know why you're voting good, or yes or no. And that's, that's, that's all I want you to think about in the future, versus just making decisions, you know, the idea of the growth, as I mentioned earlier, by itself is not adequate. So you need to let us know, why is it a good idea to do what you're doing? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else for the public? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Kara Dixon, and I'm here this evening with my husband, Dave, and along with several of our neighbors at the Flagler Polo Club West. And one of my neighbors couldn't be here this evening, but he shared some information about our neighborhood. And it's just so perfect, I got permission to share it. When my husband and I first moved into our neighborhood, we found this lot, a five-acre lot near, somewhat near the beach, and, you know what? My sister-in-law told us, it's the worst investment you'll ever make, and you know what? It turns out to be the most awesome investment we ever made. My husband says, we're gonna live and die there. We just built our house, it's beautiful, our dogs love it, and, you know, we're not thrilled with the concentrated homes that are coming in. Our neighborhood is willing to work with other people, but, you know, it's gotta be fair. Anyway, I just wanted to share this comment about our neighborhood. The Polo Club Charter dictates that the natural environment has been immaculately preserved to retain the beauty of old-world Florida. The abundant forest with towering oak trees and natural vegetation has created a setting uncommon in the local community. These features, combined with waterfront home sites along Buellow Creek, make the Flagler Beach Polo Club West, one of the finest environmentally sensitive communities in Florida. So, when our attorney was talking about trees, those trees are really important in our, in our area. If you only, you can come to my house anytime, 43 Steeplechase, and look at this amazing oak tree in our backyard. My husband designed our house so that we can look out our windows and see it every day, so, it's just very draining and very upsetting, all of this, for everyone this evening, and hate to see it all go. I mean, the trees, it's really, really quite remarkable. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Your decision is not a hard one, it's not hard at all. And I'll tell you why. It's because every court in this country, when you've taken it all the way to the appeals courts, have said that property owners are not guaranteed to maximize the use of their property. That's guaranteed, for sure, okay? And I've been up against that a number of times, many years ago, okay? And so, what I'm telling you is, your decision isn't hard. Look at all the people behind me, and I can tell you, there are thousands more out in Palm Coast, in the county, okay? You know, you're here to be the best stewards of the land, okay? And the rules that you're, you're trying to follow here, are missing the basic one. You don't have to approve this, you don't have to guarantee that any property owner, no matter who they are, can maximize the use of their property. And so, it, it just seems that you're missing the real big point here. And there isn't any decision to make, and this idea about whether you gotta put it off, or you don't have to put it off, or whatever, I get a kick out of your comments about having to go to the PLRB. Do you know how many times you guys have not paid attention to the PLRB? Most of the time. I can't give you the number, but I know it's most of the time. So, what I'm saying is, be conscious of that. We have a new year here, this is an election year, it's very important to all of us, okay? I'm sure there's gonna be some change. And I would like to make a point about the issue of the, of this appearing on the city agenda. The only way this thing, these things can appear on the city agenda, okay, is the city manager has to put them on there. Now how they got on there, maybe we'll find out how we, they got on there. But I'm sure she just didn't wake up one morning and say, I wanna put this on the agenda, okay, when it's already been decided. So, so, please, consider everybody, the county and the city residents, and remember, anytime you vote on any of these development issues, you don't have to guarantee maximization of anybody's property. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else?
Good evening, Happy New Year. Christine Kraus, 60 Steeplechase Trail, Flagler Polo Club West. I know you're probably tired of hearing about this one-acre lot. It doesn't really affect me, I'm all the way on the other end, with a lot of these other, but it does affect the spillers. So we're all here speaking on their behalf, because they are always in St. Augustine with their deaf children, trying to get them help with their sports, because they have to travel up there. What is another 500 feet of fence? I don't understand it. I don't know what the big deal is. This is GeoSam's property. I don't care who it ends in future, it's GeoSam's right now. They should take care of it, at this point, right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Peter Johnson, Palm Coast. Mayor, I, I obviously don't live in Flagler Polo Club, but I think there is a point that needs to be made, is in the Hammock Flagler Beach, Flagler County Incorporated has done a pretty decent job of retaining the type of lifestyle that they like to live. Those areas care a lot about preservation, and I think the majority of Palm Coast cares a lot about preservation as well. This seems to be another project that is just stuffing in as much density as possible at, in, complete against the public's perception, who live there locally and are surrounded and affected by it. With that being said, I, I'm not one of their members, I have no say in this, but the can keeps on getting kicked down the road on this issue, and it constantly looks like it is in beho, it is in, no, it is benefactoring the applicant of this property. There's been two hearings now that have been kicked down the road, if this one continues, and it just keeps on going back, and there's no compromise being made. And, it seems like a pretty simple issue from an outside perspective. There's a simple piece of lot, they want it fenced, I don't understand why it can't be fenced. If not, I mean, the whole point of our comprehensive plan is to make sure that these areas mesh with each other. This area does not mesh by putting in the maximum. I understand that the mixed-use lot got changed and all that sort of situation, but still, I, I mean, no offense, sir, you're living up to your name of stuffin', stuffin' an elfin, because we are just putting in houses on top of houses, with no disregard for the residents and the surrounding members of Flagler County. So I just hope you sincerely take that into consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Please, 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 please. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Short. My name's Laura Biddle, and you guys have seen me a number of times up here, I'm at 67 Steeplechase Trail, I live at Polo West. What we're asking for is just the two-week extension. You heard, you're hearing the one lot, the one-acre lot, all the time. But like our attorney said, there are several things that were still pending in the agreement. When we walked in here, we thought we were getting the 25-foot minimum buffer. As soon as we got to the door, we heard that we weren't. We were only getting 10 feet. Now, the two lawyers and attorneys got together during this meeting, and it's now gonna be 25 feet minimum. But there are many things yet to be finalized. We worked really hard, the beginning and the last meeting, and I think that we need the opportunity to continue working the path and getting it done, because we're this close. And I just would ask that you wait, and don't make a rushed decision. We're not asking for anything different than we've been asking all along, we just want to finalize what we're at. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, I'm Dave Dixon, Dave Dixon, 43 Steeplechase, in the Polo Club West. I attended the workshop with Mr. Schmento here on December 17th. We had an agreement. We all walked out of there with an agreement. And then we come here tonight, and that agreement is no longer on the table. He pulled the fencing, and put in some other verbiage in the agreement. So we have to postpone this another two weeks. So I don't think you have any other choice. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any, excuse me, are there, yes, sir.
All right, good evening, my name's Chuck Tome, I'm a resident there, I'm Secretary at Lane there, 32 Secretary at Lane. And, this is a unique, unique community. I bought in this property, there's currently, I believe, only three completed houses on this street. It's a short street, with the large oaks. I walk out, my front door is where the planned buffer is, I hope that buffer separates the two communities, you're gonna have a high-density and low-density commu, communities next to each other. But with that buffer, which I understood that was in place, that, that's really important to keep the uniqueness of our community there. It's a, it's a dead-end street, it's a short street, I don't even think it's a mile, maybe a half a mile, with that, with that lot on the end, and I just don't, you know, how to use that, in that, the high-density, it, it just doesn't match with the, where the communities meet. But we're just asking, you know, to preserve these buffers, preserve the trees, preserve that community that, you know, that we have out there at Polo Club West.
Thank you for your comment.
Happy New Year. Tom Brady, retired but not from football. Thank you. Anyway, I would, I'm very concerned about some of the proposed future land use slash zoning changes. I came from a city where the mayor and his council insisted on putting in a mall, everybody in the city was opposed to that. Guess what happened to the mall? A few years ago, they, well, within 10 years, they tore the mall down, it laid vacant for a period of time, then all of a sudden, an entrepreneur came in and redid it. But because he did not follow what the people wanted, okay? Out in Flagler Beach, I was talking to some people, that the council and the mayor voted on that big high-rise, which is north of Moody Boulevard. None of those councilmen and mayor were re-elected after that, because they went opposed to what everybody else went it out, went out there. Also, I'm concerned about the green areas. As I ride my bike up along Malacamper, I look off there, and there's Richmond Homes, and they actually still left the trees on the outside, so you actually have to look hard to see the actual houses back in there. The same thing down in Ormond Beach, there is a golf course, I didn't even realize there's a golf course, off A1A, west of A1A by Ormond Beach, until one day, the sun was shining through there, and I could actually see it through there. So I would like to see us maintain those green areas, simply because they're doctors, they're finding out that the green areas, they give green prescriptions to people, to go out in nature, to commune in nature, et cetera. And, first of all, as I look at you, I hope that you would take a look and be proud of the future decisions that you make, because they do have an impact into the future. My brother's an architect, and every building that he makes, every one that he remodels, he takes a look at the impact that it would have on other people. I am extremely proud of my brother, simply because he does not allow certain buildings in certain areas, because it is opposed to, diametrically opposed to what is good for the community. One of my, a person that I talked to this last week, they let $45,000 go on a deposit on a house, because they went over there and started looking at the construction, it was a stick house, they did not want a stick house. So I'm concerned about some of these houses that are being built, that are stick houses, like the Three Little Pigs, you know, versus the brick and everything. On, next door, there are a lot of people that are opposed to this, and that's why I'm here tonight, I thank those people. I would also encourage us to take a look at the actual impact fees, instead of just randomly $1,000 here. Thank you so very much, I appreciate you.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, sir.
Good evening, I'm, my name is Kenz-
My name is Ken Zeca. I'm building a new home on 59 Steeplechase in the Polo Club. And I want to explain because I heard the mayor wondered why more people weren't coming out. I missed the first meeting because I had to go to Arlington Cemetery to bury my mother. I missed the second meeting because my wife was having surgery. I'm here tonight missing time with my grandchildren and daughter and her family that are visiting from Tennessee. So please take us serious. We hired a lawyer, and if we can't be here, it might be because we have some good reasons why we missed the meeting. What I'm here to talk about is Old Kings Elementary. You took this and you made it into a low-density area. Have you gone by that school in the morning when parents are dropping their kids off? Have you seen the congestion that happens twice a day at the Old Kings Elementary School? And now you want to have a low-density area and have more people in a congested area that has a limited turning lane, that has a mall already there, that has a lot of people in a density that butts up trying to get on to 100? And we're going to add 200-plus homes, and you're going to tell me it's not going to affect the school, the school, kids picking up their children? It won't affect the safety of those kids? It won't impact the area? Explain that to me, please.
Thank you. Is there another, excuse me?
Even again, George Mayo, Palm Coast. I think the attorneys could easily figure out where the fence is going to go and where it's not going to go. I remember, as I said, I was at the meetings when this was in the county's proprietary vestibule there. What it was is, Adam Mengeled, they were iffy. Oh, that flag lot. What is it? What isn't it? It's a lot. It's not a lot. Over here, it's a lot. It's not a lot. It's going to be a flag lot. The developer could easily just put that to green space or put that flag lot as part of the property that is going to butt that. But I believe the developer's just hedging his bets, hoping he put it in, and somewhere down the line, he's going to sell that lot, and then it's going to come back to you, as he said. Well, it can't be a flag lot, but somebody's going to want to build a house there and then say, "Oh, I bought a lot. How do I get to it?" So I would hope at least you could table this, and they could figure that out. And to me, it all centers on that flag lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Kathy Ostreino. I just have a question. I'm a little confused. If I understood some of the comments, folks said that they met with Attorney Shmento, came to an agreement in December, and then came here tonight and found out there were changes. Are we able to hear from Mr. Shmento to understand what happened from when these folks thought they were in agreement to the $11,000 when they found out they weren't?
Thank you for your comment. Are there any, I'll address that in a minute. Are there any other, yes, sir?
Good evening. My name's Paul Shidel. Palm Coast wannabe, I guess. But this is, this is really, this is very, very strenuous. The thing that I see is, this is almost, just before I start, is this almost leapfrog construction. I don't even see why you want to go for commercial unless you want to put a flag there. We're pretty far from developing a city. There's a lot of empty space out there before I look at a city. But anyways, there's something that I think is probably the two most ignored terms when it comes to Old Kings Village project. It's compatibility and density. A young lady there explained it very good. Compatibility means a condition in which land use or conditions can coexist in relative proximity to each other in a stable fashion over time such that it, no use or condition is unduly negatively impacting directly or indirectly by another use or condition. This is out of your comp plan. The property rights issue is also important. I've heard property rights, usually when a developer comes in, he buys a piece of property, and then, "I want to build it this way." And hey, you've got property rights, so fine. And I hear that. But you know, I looked at this chart. This is your chart. I don't know if you guys even look at it. But it starts out with what you have at the Old Kings Village, single-family residential dash one. It's 6,000 square feet. There's some homes in the Polo Club that are more than 6,000 square feet, and it's lucky for them or good for them. They've worked hard. But this density starts at single, 6,000 square feet, and it goes back up to the Ag, which is Polo Club. It's five acres. There's two, three, four, five. These have all these other densities. Each one has its property rights. And what I see is with the Ag or the Polo Club, it's five units per acre. There's a transition. These are, these are transitions of how dense you have. You don't, you shouldn't be jumping from one density all the way to the beginning, at the end, but you're going to, it's like it doesn't even, it's not even existing. All these other ones don't exist in this particular development.
Can you wrap it up for us?
Yes. Thank you. Is that, so there is an issue of property rights. So I think that the people in the Polo Club deserve their property rights. They don't need to be infringed upon by this. And the last thing, I'm sorry. The last thing that you, I don't know.
You have to finish up now. Go ahead.
This is the Polo Club, and they're talking, it's the wetland. This is the wetland maps. And the Polo Club is, it gets inundated with rain. So I don't think it needs 30 acres of impervious area so it floods even more.
Thank you for your comment. Any remaining speakers? Yes, sir.
So, yeah, again, Scott Shidel, property owner in Polo Club. As, well, as was mentioned, yeah, with the, you know, they're basically wanting SFR-1. It's currently SFR, if you had to put a county or a city zoning on it, it'd be SFR-3 to 5. The adjoining properties are basically Estate 2 to Ag. But yeah, this compatibility thing, you say, "Oh, you only need a 15-foot buffer according to our comp plan." The setbacks on a lot are only like 15-foot. So basically, does that mean I can put, you know, the most, least dense next to the most dense as long as I observe the setback on the property line, and that's a buffer? You know, and just quickly else, you know, Mr. Bayer, I think he mentioned that if it wasn't for the shell games going on, we would have had an expert likely here tonight. Additionally, also have a, the city clerk did get an email this afternoon from an attorney that's also representing me, who's an expert in this type of stuff, and will probably be joining conversations as well, and forward, send this.
Thank you. Go ahead and give that to Clark, if you will. Any other comment?
Thank you.
Good evening. Jessica Matthews. As you know, I live in Seminole Woods. I don't live in Polo Club. But I'm here because, look around. This room is packed, and it's been packed for weeks. No one's happy with things lately, if you can tell. There's many water issues on lots. Anexing land from Flagler County constantly is causing issues and hardships and quality of life to the already existing residents and homes. From what it sounds, and I'm going off of what I've been learning the last few weeks with this, it does not seem that these two sides are too far off from each other. In fact, it appears that they can work together to reach a decision. I actually had the chance to meet with Mr. Shmento, and the conversation was very good. Let these individuals work together to figure out the solution. Cascades was looking for 850 units, and it got next to 416. And I guarantee you that most of the people that were here that night would have been okay with additional single-family homes if it wasn't for the fact that they were going for the multifamily. It got next, and then now they're down to 416, and we're here for a rezoning, a rehearing on that particular issue. So that way, they don't lose out, and then that way, the residents don't lose out. They need to work together. Let them go back. Let them table it. Work together. Come up with solutions. Don't bring problems to you. Make them bring a solution to you. I honestly believe that both sides would benefit better if they could come to some sort of agreement. And lastly, I'm going to leave you with this. Palm Coast was a really great place to be, and now it's a good place to be. And what I mean by that is your residents are not happy with the way things are going because of decisions that are being made by the building that you're bringing in. I don't know if you're a reader, but if you are, there's a book, and it's called From Good to Great, and it talks about customer service and how businesses bring good-level service and they become great for their customers. This place can be great if you listen to the residents. This place can be absolutely amazing if you listen to the existing people that pay the taxes and are here. I really don't think the two sides are far off. Just make them go back to the table legally, however it needs to be done, and come to a solution.
Thank you for your comment. Come on up.
Bob Addick, Tulaxan Court, resident in Flagler County for 40 years. I do pay property taxes in the city of Palm Coast also. So, you know, on December, September 11th, 113 days ago, you guys gave direction to us and to the applicant to work on issues, resolve them, come to you guys with solutions. And that is what we have been trying to do. I'd like to echo our attorney, Dennis Bayer, who said that had we known we weren't going to have an agreement done today, we would have brought experts along. We would have. City staff will tell you that at the last city meeting we had with the developer, we worked through every single issue that we had as a neighborhood. We're all in agreement, you know? Can everyone give me an eye? Eye, you know, yes, this is where the fence is going. This is the buffer. Matt Lottie brought cross-sections. We agreed. And today, five hours before this meeting, we realized that we didn't have an agreement. And I don't know how you can vote on it. If you vote on it tonight, you're giving them a hall pass. I believe the staff said they can sell this property. All of these things they've promised will be out the window. We do not have an agreement. We look to you for your support, for your protection. We are residents of your county. We care about this community. Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any remaining speakers?
Happy New Year, everyone. I don't have a dog in this fight, but...
Go ahead and introduce yourself, please.
Arthur Higgins, 26 Coolidge. Okay, I'd just like to read an order, one of the ordinances on the books with regard to drainage. It's under Article 4 Drainage. Let's see. "The intent of this article shall be to promote, protect, and to improve the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city. The article is for the purpose of reducing the effect of stormwater runoff from one of the..." Sorry, guys. "...from one lot to another and to provide a more positive drainage to outfall systems." That is, sorry, Section 24, 151. Then, when you scroll down to 150, let's see, Section 24, 156 Lot Survey. See, "The final survey shall be submitted to the city manager or designee not less than two working days prior to the day of the request for final inspection is made for the building official. If examination of the final survey and/or physical site examination by the city manager or designee indicates stormwater drainage has not been properly provided for, then the owner or contractor shall correct deficiencies to provide for proper drainage. The drainage examination shall include movement of stormwater into the conveyance system and assure that the stormwater runoff onto adjacent lots has not been considered, has been considered, and mitigated." That's it.
Thank you.
That's on the books.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, then.
Louis Gennaro. It's funny because I didn't even think I was going to be walking up here. Louis Gennaro. This wasn't on my plan. I would just come here to listen, see what was going on. But I can see there's a lot of people here going through a lot of hardships, and I know some of you know that I work for the city. And I just wanted to share something with you. When I came back to the yard today from working, I looked at the TV, and it says, "It's our mission to..." Wait a minute. Hold on, my glasses. "...to deliver exceptional service by making citizens our priority." This is one of the reasons why I started working for the city, because I know the city cares about people, because usually, a lot of times, I go on calls because of, you know, picking some dead animal or something, or cutting something that needs to be cut. So the city does have a code that they go by, and I just think that it'd be nice to assure these people that we're going to be there for them and that, you know, we'll get through it, and we're, you know, we're going to do everything we can to make things right and makes, you know, just make things better for them.
All right. I thank you for that. Any additional comments?
Sorry, I forgot to mention, the previous speaker reminded me of something that, because yeah, we started off, Mr. Mayor, you were asking if there was things from that county letter that were still not addressed. And one of the things that I believe was in that letter was also regarding runoff from that property and where it was going to go and how that was going to be handled. And I'm not sure if I heard anything about that, and, you know, they can correct me if I'm wrong. And also, there was, at the last meeting, I believe, you said, you know, your goal would be to where basically none of us are happy at the end. That way, you know, it was a, like a, you know, nobody got everything they wanted. That works when there's, you know, actual, you know, it doesn't work like, yeah, I'm telling you, yeah, I want you to give me $500, and, you know, you're like, I don't want to give you anything. Okay, let's meet in the middle. It'll be $250. We're both unhappy. You know, so this thing, you know, it has to have a basis to have that be the proper outcome is where everybody's not happy. If, you know, that basis is not there on one side, then, yeah, one person doesn't necessarily have to be unhappy, and the other one, you know, or both don't have to be unhappy. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else?
Celia Buglisi, Palm Coast. No matter which way you look at it, it's non-compatible. How could you approve agricultural land all around this property and 5-acre Equestrian Homeowners Association that they invested their life savings on this with those small multifamilies that you want to approve, or they want approved? Mr. Dennis McDonald said that you don't have the obligation to accept the maximization of the use of a lot by any owner. So please, look into that and feel for these people, too.
Thank you for your comment. Any last speakers? Yes, sir. Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman. My name's Tom Hudson. I live at one forty Haber Sham. It's in Flagler Beach Incorporated. I'm a neighbor with the Polo Club. I just have two comments. Uh, don't have a, really a dog in the race because I don't live in the Polo Club, but we're down next to them and their density will in fact impact us because of the King's Elementary School that's up on the top. I listened when we first started. It went from a fence to an agreement that they were supposed to have that now they don't have. It just seems a little ridiculous that the builder, developer will put up one side of the fence but won't complete the other side. They said they had an agreement. You're gonna make a decision tonight, which you should vote no on it. Don't worry about table and just vote no. The only leverage these people have is your action here tonight. You can either vote no on it or table it, but there's no way, listening to your constituents here, how you could pass for this. The last comment that I have is for you, Mr. Mayor. I sit out here, this is my first uh opportunity to come and listen to Palm Coast government, but I was shocked at your professionalism when the HOA attorney was up here and he made a comment and turned to leave and you snapped back at him that that was his opinion. That's unprofessional. Very, very unprofessional. It, it kinda leads spectator in the back of where your heart's at in this, this, this race. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any remaining speakers? With that, I'll close public comment. I'll come back to the dais, but first, uh, the attorney for the applicant, there was a question about a change uh at the eleventh hour. Can you address that?
Um, there is a, a legal document that was being drafted between the parties and we are wordsmithing that, so yes, there were some changes as it relates to the fence issue. I'm not sure, I can't tell you with certainty whether my client agreed to what they thought they agreed to or whether there was any question, but remember there was.
Please, please.
There has been great efforts to provide fencing along there to protect residents from our community from entering into their community. Uh, one resident doesn't like its location. Uh, the developer proposed an alternative um location, but remember, there's also been many, many other concessions in this agreement. Uh, and I think you heard one gentleman from the association said that they've had their opinion and they haven't changed at all. And, and that may be part of the problem is that there hasn't been um that um working together that they had. But I think we're close. Uh, I think that Mister Bear and I have talked about some alternative solutions, as you may have seen as he was sitting here. So we're, we're anxious and hopeful that we can get there. But again, you know, the, these aren't necessarily part of the process from a comprehensive plan amendment. These are just you all getting stuck negotiating uh in between various parties. And um, I can just tell you that GOSAM is committed to solving their issues, but they have to recognize that they may not get a hundred percent of whatever they may have wanted or everybody in that community. But we're willing to stick it out and, and, and work through this.
Thank you. City council members, questions?
I'm just curious, what are the specific differences here? Where are we? What do we need to?
Yeah, it sounds, it sounds to me like we got two things, right? The trees and the fence.
Yeah, that's what it sounds like.
No, no, it's not trees.
Folks, please, I can't hear.
So the next part of the process is the engineering where they have a tree survey and, and, and they lay out lots. And so that's coming later on down the road. Um, that has not been part of the discussion. The only issue other than some um language, which I can, I can appreciate Mister Bear's position and, and that's fine, I think we've worked through that, uh, is just the location of the, this fence along the northeast boundary. One person wants it in a different location, the property owner doesn't want it there. They're still willing to put a fence to uh achieve the objective, which is to keep the residents from this community out of that community, uh, assuming that there's a problem there. Uh, and, and that's where we were uh tonight and yes, it did change um from when Mister Bear provided us with a, a draft some time ago and the holidays today have an impact on it.
I'm gonna ask a stupid question, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Can you guys come back in fifteen or thirty minutes with a solution so we can get through this? I'm just asking.
I, I, I would like to think we are, but I don't wanna hijack your night.
Let me, let me.
Hear for Mister Bear.
Hold on, let's, I don't wanna negotiate for the dais. If you have, if you have an interest in tabling this because you feel strongly that they can come together on an agreement, that would be a better approach.
I would be hoping they could come to agreement while we move on to something else and come back before the end of this meeting.
Is there emotion there? Is there emotion there?
And I don't know.
No, I, I understand and, and Mister Bear and I have worked together for, for twenty-five years. Um, and um, we seem to, to get to a happy compromise or an unhappy compromise. Um, but you know, the proposal that we said to address this, he, he, he told me he can answer the question, that he's not able to accept it today because that lot owner is not present tonight. So I would hate to put them in a position and put everybody in this confluence to address this, I don't know, twenty, forty, ninety feet of fence, whatever it may be.
Mister Schimeno, can you share the podium with Mister Bear for a moment?
Certainly, yeah, yeah, please.
I don't wanna go back and forth on this, so.
Yeah, just, just real briefly, as, as far as any settlement, the draft that was submitted initially by the developer, our response back required approval of our board from the homeowners association. There's no way I can get that tonight because there's some other language changes that were still wordsmithing that just came about this afternoon. So there's, it's, it's gonna take some time.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Mister Bear, before you go, sorry, I hate to yo-yo you back and forth. Substantively, other than the fence, what are the still remaining issues? Mister Schimeno seems to think it was, or, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if it's the fence um that was changed, okay, is it your position that it was also the fence or was there something else that was substantively changed?
There were some other changes that came about today that we need to address and, you know, typically when there's negotiations going on between attorneys, it's confidential.
Sure.
But there were some language in there that was added at the last minute and a couple of the paragraphs that gave me significant concern that, tentatively, I think we've worked those out, but I don't have a final agreement, I don't have a final draft yet.
So is your, is your, is your feeling, is your request that um some reasonable amount of time can get you to a finish line?
Two weeks would be fine.
Okay, Mister Schimeno.
Yes, sir.
Uh, some reasonable amount of time can get you to a finish line?
That's fine. Yes, sir.
Okay, you've heard from both attorneys now, so city council members, uh.
Since they're both asking for an additional two weeks, I'll make a motion.
Well, hold on. So, city manager, where does two weeks put us in terms of a meeting?
Sixteenth, the day before the PLDRB.
It's the sixteenth, just like the previous item we discussed.
So I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
State it, please.
I'll make a motion to table this date certain to the sixteenth of this month.
I have a second. I have a, I have a motion from Vice Mayor and a, uh, Danko and a second from Councilwoman Pontieri.
And just for posterity, I'm not, I'm not certain that the audience heard, uh, Vice Mayor Dank, you did not hear, okay, so do you mind just restate?
Hold on, so.
Not trying to pull anything here.
Does the clerk have the, the motion? Can you restate it?
Yes, so the motion uh by Vice Mayor was to table two times certain of January sixteenth.
Mine?
Oh, I'm sorry, at nine AM.
It's really a motion to postpone to a date certain of January sixteenth at nine AM in order to preserve the uh legal advertisement for ordinances under state law.
Thank you for that, correct. Okay, um, any additional discussion by city council members?
No.
I don't have any. I think that both, both the councils should be able to come to terms here. I think at the worst case scenario, I mean, come to an agreement, I'm sure that you, you will. I mean, if they have to supplement and build the fence on the property owner and then pay for it, whatever they have to do to come to terms, it doesn't sound like there's very far to go before we cross the finish line here. Um, so yeah, let's do it.
Councilwoman Hyder?
I agree.
Okay. The only, I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilwoman.
You know, the, the only thing I, I just wanted to, to state is I, I have to um commend the applicant to an extent because I do understand there being concessions. My main concern was with the zoning. I, I appreciate you all going to Commercial One rather than Comp Two. I saw that in the zoning which was next, so I appreciate that, I hope that remains. Um, I do, just for the public's benefit, um, I don't want there to be any misconceptions out there about what we are going from in the county to what we are going to in the city. The county was residential low density, which would have been one dwelling unit per acre and this was about sixty acres, so you're looking at around two hundred and forty dwelling units. Um, it was previously approved by Flagler County for two hundred and thirty-two dwelling units and it went down to two hundred and ten dwelling units. So, and I only bring that up because I think what we're really talking about is how do we now make the, the PUD protections remain for the, for the neighborhood, um, for the Polo Club West benefit? And so that's what we're really looking at. So as, as the, as Mister Bear, Mister Schimeno, the applicant and the, and the HOA get back together, really the focus should be on not the density, the density's not really the issue. It's how do we make this compatible with Polo Club West and how do we preserve the protections that the original PUD had in place? So that is the direction and I'm only providing that so that you all know what I'm looking for, somebody who's going to be voting on this, is how do we make sure that this remains compatible and is close to the original PUD as it originally was, so.
Thank you for that. All right, if there's no further discussion, then let's do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Aye.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Alfin?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Now, we move next, we move next to the item which is a, the, the, the second part of this. Um, and um, you have no, no discussion on it?
Well, the zoning can't be approved if the flume is not.
I anticipate a motion, the exact same motion, which would carry the next item forward, but I gotta go through the, the administration of it. Are there any comments regarding the next agenda item that we need to hear?
I don't think so.
Okay, can you just very briefly dis, well, I'm sorry, let me start off. Counselor, would you read the item into the record for me?
I will do that and then give you a recommendation on how to procedurally handle this. The next item is the companion rezoning ordinance for the previous ordinance that, previous?
Okay, okay.
I can eat the mic. Um, this is the companion rezoning ordinance for the um future land use map amendment ordinance that was postponed, the previous item. So I'm just gonna read it in by title and then I would like Mayor to make an, a recommendation on a motion. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, amending the official zoning map as established in section, section two point zero six of the city of Palm Coast, Unified Land Development Code for sixty-two point three one plus or minus acres of certain real property described as tax parcel identification numbers thirty-eight dash twelve dash thirty-one dash zero 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 dash zero three zero four zero dash zero zero six zero and parcel ID thirty-eight dash twelve dash thirty-one dash zero 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 dash zero three zero four zero dash zero zero seven zero and parcel thirty-eight dash twelve thirty-one dash zero 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 dash zero three zero four zero dash zero zero eight zero, generally located on the east side of Old Kings Road, about two point five miles south of State Row five, uh, one hundred Moody Boulevard and being more particularly in, described and attached Exhibit A from planned development PUD to the single-family residential one SFR dash one and neighborhood commercial COM dash one and zoning, zoning districts providing for separability conflicts and effective date. Um, I just read that into, into the record just, just to note it and then recommend that the council adopt the same motion from the previous item to postpone this item uh to the next business meeting.
Set a consensus or vote?
January sixteenth at nine AM and it needs to be by vote.
By vote. So I would go ahead and ask for a motion.
Go ahead and make that same motion.
You have to state it, make it clear and, and put the time.
To, are we, we're postponing this to date certain January sixteenth, nine AM.
I'll second.
Okay, so I have a motion from Vice Mayor Danko and a second from Councilwoman Pontieri. Is there any additional discussion, city council? Then I would open this up to the public, uh, as I would, uh, any final comments? Okay, and this would be on the merits of the postponement?
Correct. Dennis McDonald, I've been sitting in the back room watching this thing and having been in the development business, the commercial development business, never in Florida, okay? Uh, I gotta tell you, I don't understand how you folks on this council can be so disrespected by one attorney and this game that was played up here tonight. This never should have come onto the floor, okay? The attorney never should have brought this forward. It was a, it was a slam dunk from the side, somebody was trying to squeak something in, it was a cheap shot is what this whole thing was and thank you for not allowing them to make it.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else? Okay, excuse me. All right, with that, then I'll close public comment, um, and come back to the dais, any additional discussion? Let's roll call it again to be consistent. Uh, go ahead, hold on a second. Go ahead, call the roll and catch them last.
Sure. Uh, Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Alfin?
Yes, and we'll hold for Councilman Clufus. So, right, Councilman Clufus, we've, uh, we're voting on the, the amendment, uh, same, uh, sorry, on the motion, same motion, uh, for time certain at nine AM on the, on that date, so.
We, we did our roll call vote.
I vote aye.
Okay, thank you.
You have the count?
Yes, yes, unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, very good. Okay, we now move forward to uh item number F four. And Counselor, if you could read that in for us, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, this next item is an ordinance, the Cascades Comprehensive Plan Amendment, application fifty-one zero nine. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, providing for the amendment of the city of Palm Coast twenty thirty-five Comprehensive Plan as previously amended pursuant to section one sixty-three Florida statutes, amending the future land use map flume designation for approximately three hundred and thirty point eight acres of certain real property from residential low-density rural estate and conservation Flagler County designation to residential and conservation city of Palm Coast designation as described in more detail in the legal description, which is an exhibit to this ordinance and adding a note on the future land use map to certain, to limit certain subject area to be called the Cascades Planning Area, three hundred and seventy-five acres to a maximum development of eight hundred and fifty dwelling units, providing for conflicts ratification and prior acts codification, separability, and an effective date. My understanding this is a rehearing item from a previous decision made by council on December nineteenth. This is a legislative matter proposing a comprehensive plan amendment. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Counselor. Uh, Mister Papa, do you have a presentation to start with?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and members of city council. Staff's presentation will basically just summarize uh the events that have occurred that have led to this evening's request. So again, what we have is a proposed comprehensive plan amendment for three hundred and seventy-five acres, three hundred and thirty acres of which is subject to a map change due to its annexation. The forty-five acres or the hook piece is a, was previously annexed and the, the comp plan amendment here is from county residential low-density and conservation to city residential and conservation with a policy to limit development to eight hundred and fifty dwelling So with this comprehensive plan amendment, it was heard before the Planning and Land Development Regulation Board on August sixteen, twenty twenty-three, where it received a recommendation of approval. It went to city council and approved on first reading on September nineteen, twenty twenty-three. It was transmitted to the state agencies and to other various state agencies and received no comments. On November seven, twenty twenty-three, city council approves a comprehensive plan amendment with a site-specific policy to limit development to four hundred and sixteen units. And along with that, there was a companion zoning map amendment to change the desert, the zoning map designation to single-family residential one and preservation. And that's what was approved. The applicant filed a motion for a rehearing on the comprehensive plan amendment only. Uh, the zoning map amendment is not subject to the request for the rehearing, so the single-family zoning and the preservation zoning is not at issue tonight that, because that was approved. zoning is not at issue tonight, because that was approved by a different ordinance. And that motion was received in a timely manner by staff. And that's staff's presentation.
Questions for staff from City Council members?
I'll reserve my time till after we get to public comment.
My question is, with regards to the land use designation legal description between what we voted on both, well, what PLDRB approved on August sixteenth and what City Council voted on both on September nineteenth and November seventh, how has that legal description changed from what the applicant is currently currently asking for?
The the legal description has has not changed from when it went to the planning board and then went to the City Council. There was no change to the legal description. If I was to infer from what the applicant's request is, I believe their contention is that there's a portion of the planning area that should not have been included.
So the issue is not actually the land use designation at all. The issue is actually that the applicant's claim now is that the hook piece or the JTL property was not to be included in the planning area, correct?
Correct.
So Mr. Shmento's letter requesting a rehearing specifically asked for a rehearing because the land use designation was incorrect in what we previously did. That's not correct. Isn't it true that we that we did not change the land use designation for the hook piece?
The hook piece was not subject to a color change or a land use change.
So we didn't touch the land use change for the hook piece, correct?
No, we did not, ma'am.
Okay, so my, I have a lot of comments, and I will reserve until after public comment, but I would just put in the minds of my colleagues the fact that we had a motion for rehearing based on something that did not occur. We had a, we have a motion for rehearing that was granted because we received a letter that specifically states the following. On November five, which is not correct, it was actually November seventh, two thousand twenty-three, the city passed a resolution changing the designation without notice to JTL or the required authorization from JTL. The preceding sentence says, since two thousand fourteen, the city's land use designation for the JTL property has been residential. That did not change at all. Correct, Mr. Papa?
I believe the change occurred at a later date, but yes, since about twenty nineteen, I would say it's been residential.
So in two thousand nineteen, but on, in September and November, we didn't change the land use designation?
No, ma'am. It was not subject, again, to a color change on the map.
Okay. Mayor, I'll, I'll wait until after public comment, but I would, I would ask that you do come back to me, please. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hyder, any question or comment from staff? Councilman Clufus?
So I, I'm just thinking aloud here. Basically, although the description didn't change, weren't we also just preempting basically like a guaranteed lawsuit if we didn't, if we didn't attempt to re-
Excuse me, please.
Well, Councilman Clufus, if I may, I know you're, you're referring to the takings clause, right? So my understanding is that if if we did not have permission to change the land use designation, perhaps, yes, but we didn't change the land use designation. So that potential does not exist anymore, because there never was a land use designation change. It was always residential. It's still residential. And the ordinance itself, we actually, it specifically says that the land use designation was only subject to the three hundred and thirty point eight acres, not to the forty-four point whatever it was acres. So the only thing that we did with the forty-four point eight acres was include it in the Cascades planning area, which is the policy limit. And again, I can go into, I'll go into more information with regards to how we know for a fact that the applicant was aware of that. His attorney was here, and they actually advocated for us to approve the eight hundred and fifty dwelling units based on the fact that the hook piece was included. So the land use designation changed the very premise upon what we're, why we're here. And to your point, I think I said at the last hearing, we are, we are creating a slippery slope by granting this rehearing because we did not misapprehend any facts or law, which is what the LDC says we have to do in order to grant a rehearing. That didn't occur.
So was it your understanding that both landowners were properly represented here?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, I haven't-
All right, so we'll hold that, and we'll ask, we'll ask, we'll get confirmation on that.
Well, no, Mayor, I want to answer your question. You asked me a question. I want to answer it. So specifically, at the November, at the November seventh meeting, or I believe it was the, give me one second here, because I don't want to misstate anything. At the September nineteenth meeting, Mr. Shmento specifically stated at two minutes, two hours and five minutes that he presents to the City Council as the applicant's plural. He was representing both Burn Dog and JTL. So yes, he has always been present, representing both applicants throughout this process.
And staff has that documentation that both owners had signed off on that representation? I'm not sure I, I will, I understand that.
We have assigned, what would you call, an affidavit that that the JTL property was to be included in the amendments.
In the plan, in the planning area, not in the flume amendment. It was never included in the flume amendment.
Right.
But it was always to be included in the planning area, and that's exactly what we did. We included it in the planning area.
Didn't that require a signature from that property owner?
Yes, sir, and we have that.
Signature, notarized, the whole nine yards.
We have assigned that. Yes, sir.
No, that's fair.
Okay. All right. Anything else now?
Not at this time.
All right, then, with that, I will open up for public comment.
I'm Mark Chantel, Seven Old Woods. As you can see, all the people behind me and in the other room are here because they have lost faith and confidence in the City Council. And they don't, they don't understand why there has to be a rehearing when it was already approved. Now, on a lighter side, we would like to give a thumbs up to Councilmembers Pontieri and Hyder for supporting the people of this town. But we'd also like-
No, no, please.
Please have some respect for the speaker.
Nope. But we'd also like to give a thumbs down to Councilmember Clufus for never voting with the people, especially in his own district. Stop, stop, stop. We used to be, we were talking about voting. In November seventh, on the Cascades, you voted in favor of the original plan for four hundred sixteen single-family homes, you yourself, Mayor. Now, in December nineteenth, you were jumping at the bits to change your vote. Now, which is it? Now, according to the Florida statutes, you're not legally allowed to vote because of a conflict of interest, and we have proof of that. Anyway, it's my understanding that there's been information and documents submitted to an investigation team and a major news outfit just for this case. Now, remember, Mr. Mayor, you are supposed to represent the people of Palm Coast, not your own self-interest. Also, also, these people have a voice, okay? And they're fed up with not being heard. They're not the voiceless. They have a voice, and you need to start listening to it.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Gina Weiss, Quail Hollow. Although I do not live in Seminole, on Seminole Woods Boulevard, I am concerned about this massive project, the Cascades, scheduled to be built in Seminole Woods. This project and others like it should be the concern of all Palm Coast residents because of its ramifications and unintended consequences connected with developments such as this one. We must consider what impact they will have on the surrounding area and residencies. Most importantly, the impact on the infrastructure as a whole, as well as the unforeseen ramifications that usually occur in connection with major projects such as this one, including, but not limited to, an increase in local flooding because large construction projects during and after completion change the natural flow of water and how it's absorbed, an increase in motor vehicle traffic on Seminole Woods Boulevard and Route One Hundred, a poorly designed intersection that is already overburdened, the additional drain on our water system, which consists of thirteen or fourteen wells for the whole city. This is, with other massive construction projects on Route One Hundred, which are in progress, will push our sewer plants to the limit. And it goes on. Another major housing project proposed for Old Kings Road, which will exacerbate the situation even further. So every Palm Coast resident should be concerned. In conclusion, the City Council needs to take a step back to evaluate what our public services, schools, and infrastructure can support before rushing headlong into approving these projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Point of order? The applicant will respond to staff's presentation, and then we can move on to public comment, okay?
It's a point of order, please. Point of order. Go ahead.
Let's start off with why we're here today, with the rehearing. The rehearing is only about the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and the rehearing was requested because one of the parties in the ordinance that changed the land use designation or Comprehensive Plan Amendment by adding, limiting policies was never part of the process. In fact, I know Ms. Pontieri has in front of her, as do you, an outline that we provided the city some time ago, outlining enumerating each and every correspondence between the development team, myself, and your city staff. Why it was not provided to you as part of your package up until Saturday, when I send it to you, I'm not sure why, because I think when you go back and you look at that, it's pretty darn clear that both myself and Mr. Jose Papa had said emphatically in writing that Cascades was the comp plan application, and that the hook parcel and JTL was not part of it. And in fact, I believe it was on the twenty-ninth or the thirtieth, Mr. Papa acknowledges that it's not part of it, and then goes on to say that if you want to do the rezoning, I need what? I need an authorization from JTL, the hook piece, for that. He attaches to that email the authorization. Immediately thereafter, he's copied, and there's an email from Jeff Douglas, who's the project manager, not the authorized agent for JTL. He authorizes, and he sends to Mr. West to sign this authorization for the rezoning, and that's what happened. Subsequent to providing to the city the authorization for the rezoning, Mr. Papa again says that it is not part of the Comprehensive Plan. So as I sit here right now, after working with Jose for twenty years, to suggest that that is not accurate is really frustrating, really frustrating. And so we'll move forward to that. So why are we here? It's, we all know, the city's published land use amendment says that, and the law requires, that if you're going to change land use designation or affect the Comprehensive Plan Amendment on a parcel of land, you have to have the owner's written authorization. And in fact, I mean, it's pretty interesting that Jose was wise enough to ask for that authorization for what? Just the rezoning and then subsequently? So what happened here is that we made a mistake too, you know? We made a mistake. When you look at the ordinance that was approved, it does not reference JTL. It references some acreage in there, and attached to it is a map that you can see, a colored map, identifying what the Comprehensive Plan Amendment is. And strangely enough, in that map, guess what has no colorization and left out altogether with denotation of any Comprehensive Plan Amendment? And that is the hook piece. So what I failed to do is I failed, when I reviewed the ordinance prior to it, to look at a page of the ordinance where Mr. Papa had slipsheeted in a legal description for the hook piece. He slipsheated in the hook piece, and I failed to see that, okay? And so he was working on the concept that this was part of a larger project, a planning area, but we were all working on, from the premise that this was not part of a Comprehensive Plan Amendment. So it is unequivocal that the city does not have written authorization as required by your published handbook and state code that JTL consented to a change in the land use. Now, I know Ms. Pontieri has not worked land use for twenty years like her staff and myself, and when she read the ordinance, she is right and kind of right. But what she failed to point out is that section two of the ordinance says future land use map amendment, and it includes my property, my client's property. Section three says future land use amendment, and it references the property. So I'm not sure how someone could distinguish or cut hairs as to saying what was a future land use amendment. At the end of the day, they took this process due to, it just happened. It was a mistake on all our parts, and I recognize that. But at the end of the day, there is no written authorization. And so that was the basis of our rehearing, okay? Now, if we want to get into anything deeper than that, I'm more than happy to do that. But as we sit here today, that was the basis for our change. And what we're requesting from you all is that you amend the ordinance to remove JTL, the hook piece, from the ordinance, changing the future land use map, because why? There's no written authorization from that landowner. And so that's what we're asking for today. Now, once that's done, if that is done by the council, what will be heard is what we always intended it to be, as enumerated in the outline that we provided you Saturday, is that eight hundred and fifty units would be on the Cascades property owned by Burn Dog. And the reason that was, was because we have, if you recall, we had two multifamily projects, okay? We had two full multifamily projects. We removed those. We consented to the removal of those for various reasons, and so it stayed at that. Now, as I sit today, we don't need that many units on the Cascades property because we don't have multifamily. So when you go back and you look at it, it roughly turns out that Cascades would be about two units per acre if you approved it for what we had asked, a little over two units per acre. So that is what we're here today to ask, is that you all amend the ordinance to, A, remove JTL and the hook piece because there was no written authorization, and two, that we approve Cascades for the eight hundred and fifty units that we had petitioned the council. So that's what we're, that's the action and the request we're here today. This is the second reading, as staff said. This is just the second reading all over again, and we're ready to move forward, and we'll respond to community comments afterwards. Thank you.
Okay, point of order. Let's return to public comment.
Point of order, Mayor. Since, since Mr. Shmento, which he had the right to do as the applicant, wanted to respond to staff, and because my name was specifically mentioned several times, I would like to respond to that before we resume public comment. And I, and I will be very concise and reserve all of my other comments until after public comment, but Mayor-
Wait for the dais. We're in the middle of public comment.
No, you're off. Mayor? Mayor, I am calling a point of order. I'm calling a point of order because the applicant, the applicant-
If I hear, excuse me. If I hear another outburst like that, I will reassess this meeting. Do you understand?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Point of order, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Shmento is absolutely right. I do not have twenty years of experience in land use law, but it does not take twenty years' experience to read an ordinance and to look at exhibits. And despite me not having twenty years' experience, I asked specifically about these legal descriptions during the November seventh meeting. I said, are we sure these exhibits are correct? Are we sure the legals are correct? And can we add the reference to the policy limit to both the, both of the exhibits regarding the planning area and regarding the land use designation? And was told, yes, on all accounts. It is a misrepresentation to say that section two changed the land use designation in this ordinance. That, that is not true. So that is what I'm going to specifically respond to. And the ordinance that we approved, in section two, it says, future land use- And the ordinance that we approved, in Section Two, it says, "Future land use map amended," but it then says, "The approximately three hundred and seventy-five acre subject area to be called the Cascades Planning Area, generally located three miles south of State Road 100, as legally described in Exhibit A and depicted in Exhibit 1A attached here two, is hereby limited to a maximum development potential of eight hundred and fifty dwelling units." Stick with me on this, because then Section Three says, "Future land use map amended." The future land use map designation, which is the whole premise upon which we're supposed to be here, for an approximately three hundred and thirty-point-eight acre area located within the Cascades Planning Area, is amended from residential low-density rural estate and conservation, which is the Flagler County designation, to residential and conservation, which is the City of Palm Coast designation, as legally described in Exhibit B and depicted on Exhibit 1B. So what we see from this is that Section Two only references the Cascades Planning Area to put the policy limit of eight hundred and fifty dwelling units, or what we as council voted on as four hundred and sixteen dwelling units, on the three seventy-five acres. It was Section Three that changed the land use designation from county designation to city designation on only the three hundred and thirty-point acres. And if we look at the exhibits, which are the legal descriptions, which, you know, as a land use attorney of twenty years, this should have been the number-one thing that was looked at. Exhibit 1A, and Exhibit A is the legal description for, and I want to make this part of the record, is a legal description that was for the Cascades Planning Area. It specifically says that it includes this extra forty-four-point-something acres, okay? And then we have depiction 1A, which is the Cascades Planning Area, and it specifically has this little blue dotted line that encompasses the entire three hundred and seventy-five acres. This is very important because the difference is Exhibit B, which is the actual land use designation change, does not include that extra forty-four acres. It only includes the three hundred and thirty-point-eight acres. Exhibit 1B, which is the actual proposed future land use designation, specifically has residential in yellow and conservation in green. It cuts out the Hook piece. The Hook piece is white. So again, to say that we, as a city council, misapprehended facts, or what really, really chaps my backside about this is throwing staff under the bus, because staff did nothing wrong. They did everything that was asked of them. We voted on what was, on what we were voted, on what we were asked to vote on. The facts of the matter is, this came between, this had three hearings. One at PLDRB, two before this council, and in every single hearing, the legal descriptions and the maps that were depicted were absolutely the same. There were no changes. And conveniently, after PLDRB and the first city council meeting, there were no objections. There were, there were only objections when we limited down to four sixteen rather than eight hundred and fifty. So because the ordinance does not change the land use designation of the Hook piece in Section Three, which is where the land use designation actually took place, we did nothing wrong. The, 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 the planning area, the Cascades Planning Area, which is completely different, is what was in the ordinance in Exhibit A and Exhibit 1A, and that is what we should be focused on.
I'll resume public hearing. Public comment, actually.
Public comment. Brian Butka. This rehearing, as Mr. Chimento pointed out, considers whether the lack of a notarized signature on an application is a harmless error, or does this lack of a notarization remove the applicant from the application? Palm Coast ordinance also states that the city council should not rehear applications based upon the same factors, facts, or issues, but rather on new evidence not heard before or new law. Now, new evidence would be issues that are identified after the city council decision was made. The applicant has recently raised concerns about communications with the city that occurred before this hearing, the last hearing. The applicant chose to move forward without addressing these concerns at that hearing. The time to, an obligation to address those issues was during that hearing. That time has passed, and they are not new evidence and cannot be considered. Was the applicant afforded procedural due process before the decision was reached? The answer is clearly yes. In filing the joint application, the parties bound the lots together, both are bound by the result of the city council decision. The applicants were present and represented. Through their testimony and presentations, they had the obligation and opportunity to address and clarify any communication or signature issues that they were aware of. The applicant's statements, such as "We have already made a commitment on the eastern to-go-to townhouses," make clear that JTL property understood and intended that their ninety-eight unit allocation would be part of the resulting land use agreement. A signature on a document indicates that the signer has agreed to its terms. Notarization serves as an additional step to verify the identity of the signer and to ensure that the signature was made willingly and without duress. The applicant's presence at the hearing indicates that the signature was consistent with their wishes, made willingly and without duress. While the city requires a notarized signature on the application, we must consider the harmless error doctrine. In Florida case law, consider the case of Seminole Entertainment Incorporated versus the City of Castleberry, Florida. It requires that you affirm existing decisions despite an error when the error did not prejudice the petitioner or affect the outcome. It is clear sworn testimony from the applicant can show that both properties were considered, and therefore the error did not prejudice or affect the outcome. Has this decision overlooked or misapprehended any facts or points of law? Decision was made within the statute. The applicant signed that the application was complete. The applicant's present sworn testimony demonstrate that the applicant understood that they would be bound by the amendment decision. The lack of a notarized signature is a harmless mistake. Even if a lack of a notarized signature would be found to remove one applicant from the amendment, the decision to overlay four hundred and sixteen units, limit on the three hundred and seventy-five acres, still allows for the LTL property's ninety-eight unit allocation. It is not inconsistent with decision. The decision was supported by the evidence, was consistent with existing law, did not violate any of the applicant's due process rights under law, and this original decision must stand.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Please, 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 please.
Peter Johnson, Palm Coast. So I did a public records request from the city, and I think for clarification, and I believe Ms. Pontieri may have read this email chain already, but I think we should just go over it again. Jose Papa, to Mr. Chimento, "Per discussion, we need clarification on the proposed flume and zoning amendments." Mr. Chimento responded and said, "Jose, the Hook parcel in white is not owned by us and is not part of the application." Mr. Jeff Douglas responded in and said, "Michael, JT Hell has requested that it is, and Jose, it is okay to proceed." Then, Jose, by copy, Dan Welch will modify the SFR-1 to include the JTL parcel. I mean, what are we talking about here? No, no, just shake your head. You tell me. We have known since day one, the applicant has been sitting back there. Matter of fact, where's JTL tonight? I'll sit here until we get an answer, quite frankly, sir.
You'll be there for three minutes.
That's fine. I'll sit here and stare at you for three minutes.
Does that conclude your public comment?
No. I... Hey, you know, Mayor, a few things get brought to mind. Kickbacks, how much you're bought and paid for, and who the hell you actually represent. If you have a problem with anything that I just said, you can bring it up with the people that do this.
Clerk, I'd like to, I'm going to go ahead and suspend the speaker's time. He's crossed my line. Thank you.
Crossed the line by telling the truth. I have a minute and forty-five seconds left. I'll stand up here and continue to address my public comment.
Next speaker, please.
Sir, my follow-up, sir, you can put the timer back on, because I wasn't done speaking. Your comments of crossing the line are the questions that the public has. Transparency is a major issue with the city council. Do you know that Mr. Clufus had over eighty emails sent back to him and responded to one with an automated message that kicked back to the planning board? So where is the outreach? Where is the representation on our behalf? You just want to brush it off and keep people going, and, oh, suspend the comment. You know what? I'm going to leave the last minute and twenty-seven minutes, twenty-seven seconds for the people to clap so you can hear what everyone really thinks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Darlene Shelley, Hidden Lakes, Palm Coast. It's perfectly obvious what's happening here. The developer didn't get his way, and apparently, Mr. Elfin, you didn't get your way either, because you allowed for a rehearing based on bogus evidence that Ms. Pontieri tried to tell you was bogus evidence. But when I, as a resident, asked for a rehearing based on a real claim that has actual merit, brought by the concerned citizens of Toscana and Hidden Lakes, properly requested in a timely manner, I was ignored. So that just shows us where your loyalties lie. And the fact that Mr. Clufus is sitting here tonight, but wasn't when this developer's application was brought down to a smaller size, speaks volumes, because all you're looking for is a revote with Mr. Clufus and your three little friends to have a majority, but this has already been decided. And just the facts that Ms. Pontieri brings up about the whole premise being bogus should say all it needs to say. And that's the end of the story.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Joy Cook, Seminole Woods. After reviewing the documents on the rehear, I agree with Councilwoman Pontieri. This is nothing but an attempt to go against what has already been approved because the developer is unhappy with the outcome. There is no evidence of any error, and all the correct information was provided to the planning and land development and to the city council prior to their first reading for them to make that decision. The JTL Fish Hood parcel became a part of the application after June twenty-ninth, per email, Mr. Douglas to Mr. Chimento. After reviewing the email exchange, on July fourth, the affidavit, an application was sent to David West. It was returned with a signature but not a notarization, possibly because it was Fourth of July, and we all know that the banks are closed or offices, and that's why there was probably no sign, no notarization. But that's not important. What wasn't, um, hold on. Okay. At the attorney, at the attorney's community meeting, we were given the information and showed this parcel of land. As you see, it's included. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. I was at the first planning and land development meeting with Mr. Chmenti when he gave Cascades' presentation. In his presentation, he said applicants, with an S. It's also in the minutes, applicants. Okay? Several photos of the proposed development were also displayed on over, excuse, overhead screens. We had two city council meetings again with overhead screens displaying the photos, and that at any time during this four-and-a-half months and any discussion wasn't ever found. I don't know who you think you are fooling, not to mention your behavior when this developer is in the room. You always go, if you go against your vote, you are set in a preference for every applicant for a rehear, and to put those type of false loopholes in it only to benefit the change of the outcome. We suggest that you flatten this now and not hurt the community any further. Thank you.
Dennis McDonald. Finally, we get to the important thing on the agenda. Did you hear what Mr. Chimento said about the reapplication process? You have a problem here, folks, okay? He submitted a reapplication to staff, and then staff said, "Okay." Okay, I guess that's how it went. I mean, until we dive into the, to an FOI and find out exactly what went on with the city manager, okay, and how this got on the agenda, okay? This is where your legal hit is coming from. You don't have a mechanism to do this. You decided it, okay? And now, let's think about this, though. What's really happening in this room right now is somebody sent in a reapplication to staff. Staff pushed it somewhere, and it got on this agenda, and now you're going to decide whether or not you're going to override a legal vote that you made. This is just preposterous. You know, it's like I'm living in a third-world country or something, right? The, and, and we're worried about, oh, the legal problems, the legal problems on this thing. This is the legal problem right here. I'm telling you right now. This is not legal, what you're doing. You best go back and look at your, your regulations and, and what the, and how this is going to be an outcome for you, because you are not going to survive this. And as the point was just made, every time somebody doesn't get their way, so they put something into staff and said, "Oh, I forgot to dot an i or cross a t," you know? And, you know, here we are, back in, to look at it all over again, and somehow or other come up with a third vote. It just miraculously happens all the time, you know? So, and stop and think about this. We just heard somebody say, you know, that Ms. Pontieri doesn't have any background in land use, okay? Can I ask one question to close this out? Okay? Who screwed up on this? The land use attorney. Thank you.
Next speaker. Excuse me. Next speaker, please. If there are no other speakers, then I will close public comment. Oh, come on.
Dimitri Katsenets, Seminole Woods. It must not be allowed. I represent my grandparents, who retired here, my mother, who works in Palm Coast. They are here in the audience, and I will say, and they will say the same thing. Our main concern is water. In the past two years, we have had an additional two houses built on our street. Before that, we have never had an issue with water. Now, we get water incredibly high. It's flooding our fence. The water can only, like, you can say high for a week. It needs somewhere to go. The infrastructure is overwhelmed. It's overwhelmed. The sidewalks are not usable along the Sesame Boulevard. They're also flooded. My, my grandfather likes to go for walking, he cannot. The swales along Seminole Woods are also overwhelmed. There's filled with water to the brim. The traffic along Seminole Woods Boulevard is already extremely heavy. My mother works near racetrack gas station. She says making a left turn to drive back home during rush hour is impossible. She has to make a detour. It is supposed to be a five-minute drive home. In addition, BJ's Wholesby Club is being built right next to racetrack, which will have even more traffic. The Seminole Woods Boulevard will have, will have to come to a standstill because of this. The developer wants to build eight hundred and fifty units. The infrastructure cannot handle it today. How do you expect it to hold up when Cascades is being built? The state of Florida already faces a home insurance crisis. Home insurance prices have doubled nearly, nearly every year in the past five years. You can squeeze more profit over developed area, but the water has nowhere to go. If some houses flood in Seminole Woods, every will, everybody will get an insurance cost increase. That includes eight hundred and fifty new homeowners. There has to be a limit. It will hurt the livelihoods of existing residents, but also still, it's a fake, it's like selling fake dreams to new homeowners. Their houses can flood too. Longtime residents, retirees, young families will have to leave because of floods and unbearable insurance costs. I had to come here today. I've been watching this council meeting online, and I was like, okay, something, something needs to change. Not a resigning. Please listen to the current residents.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Surya Pogilisi, Palm Coast. One other thing, which is very important, and I guess nobody is mentioning, and it's going to create a more grave issue in the future. Where are the navigation eastments for this new cascade that is going to be close to the airport affected by the takeoff and landings, practicing all these worldwide pilots and increasing amount of pilot school? Where are the navigation eastments? Will the city expose itself without navigation eastments on now a property that is ours for any request of, you know, payment over the, the usage of the airport on over five hundred feet over those homes? Think about navigation eastments. Read a description of navigation eastments, and probably in the near future, some of our affected residents on Seminole Woods will have to be paid for the usage of not having navigation eastments over their properties and being used by flight schools. This is one thing. One other thing, please approve or decide to say yes to Darlene Shelley and the Toscana and Indian, Hidden Lakes homeowners association to rehear that terrible approval that happened on Old Kings Road that is going to crowd that area. And one other thing, Mr. Clufus will fight against that tower. Mr. Clufus will fight to death, your tower, a hundred and fifty feet from our homes. You have the nerve to say that we have to have that because we have no communication. Listen, all our hundreds of neighbors about that tower that you are planning there, you see, we have perfect communication, Verizon, AT&amp;T, any kind of phone. What is the lies that you're telling about that tower? form. What is the lies that you're telling about that tower? You're going to have to explain in the future if you continue with that. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
Tom Brady, in the P section, Palm Coast, and mayor, council members, and you awesome residents of Palm Coast. Before I moved here, I spent two or three years looking for a place that would be amazing. My daughter lived in the DC area in a planned community similar to this, and I'm like, wow, this is where I want to live, in a place where we have parkways, we have bicycle trails, hiking trails, and everything else. My son-in-law just sent me a text a few weeks ago saying that Palm Coast is one of the top 10 places to retire to in the United States. So, we have an issue here because a lot of people read that and they want to live here. And so, what we need to do is figure out a way that we can feasibly put everybody here. This place was built by ITT years ago, and it was well set up years ago, designed for a lot more people than we have already in here. So, we just need to figure out a way to resolve the issues with the water, and I appreciate the council person over here that mentioned the table to water issues. That is a definite water issue. My neighbor, we drive around the city and we look at all the water problems prior to this meeting, and I'm like, we definitely have some. So, I hope that as council and mayor that you take a look at some of the issues and take pride in the decision so that 20, 30, 40 years from now, the people can stand up and say, wow, I remember when that council got together and they made some very, very wonderful decisions to make this not only great, but a greater community. Thank you so very much.
Thank you for your comment. Yes, ma'am.
Leah Lavard, Quail Hollow, double L section. I don't come to too many of these meetings, but the couple that I have been to, it's surprising to me, the contention that happens and some of the things that are going on with the board. I was here when the vote took place for all of the raises that went in. It was 200 and something percent, and I said to each of you then that you took the bar from here all the way up to here with your responsibility and what you're doing with our town, with our city of Palm Coast. I moved here because it was a quaint little town, and what seems to be taking place is that all of this building and development and the developers are, you know, selling all of their property, obviously, to capitalize on the economy right now before it tanks. That's great, but the issue here tonight is that it was limited to 416 units in that area, which directly impacts my area. And basically, they're back again to say, I didn't get what I wanted. I want to go back to the 850, and it seems like some of you might be interested in that, which it makes this an illegal meeting if what Ms. Pontieri has stated. You shouldn't even be addressing it. It is a done deal. It was decided upon. There is a rule, and the city attorney knows this, the law of prudent. Somebody makes a decision, you're held to accountability if somebody in a similar position comes to the same decision that you did. For you to turn around and flip your decision a mere weeks after having a meeting and having a discussion and doing it correctly based on the interests of the community. It is our city also. You are elected to represent us, and I watch the body language of what's going on, and this gets on, and city mayor hasn't looked up too much today because this is on her that she put this on the agenda. So, all of that's being paid attention to. You need to do what's prudent and what is right for this community. This shouldn't be happening. It's 416. That was the decision. Move on.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I'm Robert Meyer, 117 South Cooper's Hawk Way in Palm Coast. Watching this, I can understand on the board's part that there's always a concern about any kind of legal follow-up by the developers. So, therefore, it's not a black and white issue as I see it as a third party. I live right down the street from this development, but I'm not going to take a position one way or the other because I think it's up to you. And I guess, I'd be willing to bet that if you voted on this thing tonight and not go back and forth whether we should have voted and tell this guy to go to hell or not, but if we did vote tonight, my guess would be it might be instead of four to one, it might be five and zero. So, you know, and that's the... In my... The way I understand the system, that's the end of it. If you vote on this thing tonight, it's not... He doesn't come back in another month for second viewing. You know, I'm not fully knowledgeable of the process, but, I mean, why not just vote on it? I know some people are scared about you voting and passing it. I honestly can't believe that would ever happen from what I've... Tonight. 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 I've seen things happen before, but obviously, this thing started out at four to one or three to one that it was okay to get to the second vote, which turned out to be, if I'm not wrong, four to one. So, the opposite. So, it did change, and I know the reason it changed because of what's behind me. So, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor Councilman, name's Tom Hudson, 140 Habersham Drive, Incorporated Flagler Beach. Just have a couple of comments. I'm speaking for some friends that live in Seminole Woods near this development, and I said I would speak for them. So, my notes, they were ecstatic when you passed the first time and you give them the 416 units in there, and then they come back, and somebody, Councilwoman Pontieri pointed it out, decided that they technically didn't have a notary or something on one of the documents. Their fear is that it goes back to the 850 units if you vote this in tonight. This shouldn't even be a vote. Your council lady pointed out the purpose of the rehearing. That should have been answered with your attorney sitting there. If the rehearing is illegal because your attorney didn't provide the documentation that there was need for a rehearing, you shouldn't even be dealing with this. So, for some reason, the attorney is still sitting there. Point of order was raised by her before her comments were cut off, and she's going to be speaking again, I assume, at the end of this, but this shouldn't even have got to this point. Once she raised the issue of why you're sitting here on a rehearing, that's illegal to begin with. He didn't have the justification for the rehearing. So, if there's no justification for the rehearing, and your attorney can say that, you know, if he's been paying attention to what's being said, you know, we shouldn't even be dealing with it at this stage. So, my statement on behalf of my friends is that you vote no, send him back to his 20 years of experience in, you know, real estate and land development, but this is totally out of order unless your attorney tells you that your weather councilman was wrong in her assessments. It's either an approved rehearing or it's not approved rehearing. You ask your staff if the comments that he made were correct, and he said no. So, you have your own staff, your own councilman, and you should have your attorney there to give you direction. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next speaker, please.
Jessica Matthews. First, I do not blame our city manager. It got on the agenda because Councilwoman Hyder was absent, and Mr. Clufus was here, and you all voted for a rehearing without grounds except for Ms. Pontieri. I was going to read the same emails before between Douglas, Tremendo, and Papa, but we already heard them. Greed is why we're here, because we sat there at the FPC meeting, and we specifically... I specifically asked Mr. Tremendo, "Do away with the multifamily, and who cares about the 850 homes?" They said no. Tremendo argued in emails, you've heard them, that it wasn't included. Mr. Papa asked for clarifications. He did his job. Douglas said it was included. A signature from JTL was then forwarded. Where's JTL now? I was going to support a few more single-family homes tonight, but after the attack on our city workers and our councilwoman, no. Additionally, there were errors regarding the notifications to residents within 300 feet per the land development code to the extent that they had to hold another meeting at FPC, which wasted city employers' time. Mr. Hoover and another lady were there, and they were present for that. The comment that pencils have erasers from the last meeting is completely uncalled for. I cannot go to a bank and sign a legal document and then ask for it to be taken back because I made a mistake. This should have never been put to a vote for a rehearing. I am not okay with the attacks on the council. I am not okay with attacks on the city staff. Mr. Douglas just pulled me and told me to come in the back, and I spoke to him, and I clearly told him that if he would have just asked for the 850 single-family homes, none of us would have been standing here, but he wanted the multifamily, and that's what brought us all out here. Your vote last time restored faith in you as a council, and you need to stick with it again tonight. And I'm going to add something. I also told him, and he should come up here, but the attacks on Ms. Pontieri and Mr. Papa deserve an apology.
Is there another speaker?
Danny Seaman, Palm Coast, Seminole Woods. I covered the conflict of interest the last time before you guys voted to the 416, which actually, sir, was unanimous. What I have a problem with is... I can't remember the other lady's name, but that gentleman was at the planning and zoning meeting, and I have pictures, pictures worth a thousand words of the maps. I said, "I'm taking pictures." Pictures can't be erased. You did not change the amount of houses that are in the hook piece. You voted for 416, and that's the way it needs to sit. There shouldn't be a rehearing. It was already... The points of the rehearing are null and void slash irrelevant. To your point, Mr. Clufus, and I don't really want to... I'm not attacking anybody, but to your point, you wanted to do a rehearing because you were concerned about the legal matters. That was cleared up. There is no legal standing. Your attorney is right there. I've been watching him as people have been talking. I'm sure he's reading through the points that Ms. Pontieri brought up, and when you get to that point where you ask him, I'm sure he's going to go, "They're right." At least, he should say that because that's the way it is. Ms. Hyger, last time you voted with us because you saw our concern, it was really a compromise from our standpoint as residents to have 416. I didn't... I wasn't in agreement to go higher than that. With the flooding and with the infrastructure and the fire station still hasn't been built, 416 is really pushing the limit as it was. You think you compromised, so did we. To put 416 homes minus the hook or whatever in that little section is going to put strain on our neighborhood. I understand that maybe... And to your point, Mr. Denko, last time you said we need more places for people to live. 416 is quite a bit for that area. It's a one-way road at 55 miles an hour. It is a... It is pushing its limits if you put 416 in there. You voted with us the last time.
I actually voted against it.
All right. All right. Please.
But you conversated with us about it. The point of this rehearing, or the reason that this is... That we're even here today is really null and void, and I've said that. But you really need to think about it and ask the attorney that's sitting next to you because he's probably going to tell you, "They're right. This shouldn't even be a rehearing to begin with."
Thank you for your comment. Is there another speaker?
Kathy Ostrino. And this is why I came tonight. So, this whole situation, I'm not speaking to the amount of units. I'm not speaking to the multifamily, but this process. So, after mid-December somewhere, I ran into Jeff Douglas, and I asked him, going back a couple meetings, I believe, when he was very upset because Teresa accused him of taking 400 units and making it 800 units, and that's doubling. And he said, "That's not doubling." And I asked him for help because in the school I went to, that was doubling. So, I asked him to help me understand what it was that made him say it was not, and his answer to me was that there was a... There's another piece of land that it wasn't part of it, and he made it sound like there was a miscommunication, misinformation. Okay, very possible, so then it should be reheard, right? And then, some, I don't know, day or two later, it was brought to my attention that he was talking about the hook piece. Okay. Perception is reality. How many times did we hear the word "hook" in the past six months? The hook, the hook, the hook. The hook piece was part of the conversation. So, even if... And I'm not going to knock Mike for finding, or as he believes, for finding a loophole to get it reheard. That's the man's job. I'm not going to knock him for getting paid for his job. We all get paid for our job. It should not work out. We have to rely on all of you to not allow this because what I felt, my experience with Jeff Douglas, when I realized what happened, I thought, "He played me for stupid." And then I thought, adorable. Good. What these folks here feel with you allowing this, you're playing them for stupid. You're absolutely disrespecting them, and this is why they're so angry all the time. How you treat people is everything. Don't play them for stupid. Don't allow this. And if you do allow this, one of the consequences are that our staff will be treated like they were tonight. Anybody's going to want to have a rehearing. They can purposefully make a mistake, hope staff misses it, and then work their way around creating corruption all over the place. And I'm not accusing anybody of corruption here. I don't like that without hard code proof. However, future, this will help us generate corruption. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Victor Rodriguez, Seminole Woods. So, real quick, this all started as a housing issue. For two meetings, we came in here arguing a housing issue. This has become more than a housing issue. This has become a legal issue as to why this is happening in the first place. This was pushed through as a rehearing as soon as possible. The notices were just thrown up and down the next day. The residents didn't have a chance to even understand what we were going to rehear today before this started, and that's a problem. That's a big problem because that screams, and I hate to say it, but it gives the perception of corruption. I'm not saying that this is corruption, but it definitely gives a perception of corruption, and that's not something we want for Palm Coast. And then to have the lawyer, who I know is doing his job, not going to blame him at all for that, but to have him come up here and talk about your staff that way and not say anything to him, to question the people on the council's experience and allow him to do that is wrong because he's the one that made the mistake. They didn't make the mistake. He did nothing wrong. He got the application, and he did what he was supposed to do. The lawyer made the mistake. Now, hey, we all make mistakes, but if the mistake doesn't adhere to the law for a rehearing, why are we here? Why am I here for a third time talking about the same thing, wasting my time? It makes no sense. Everyone is wasting their time because we can't get it right. Everyone is wasting their time because we can't get it right. We need to get it right, and we need to get it right, right now. Whether that be to throw out the whole application, to deny the application, I don't know what that is. But right now, a decision was made, and if this rehearing is not a legal rehearing, why are we wasting our time?
Is there another speaker? Please, please, please.
I'm Donna Stantl. I live in Seminole Woods. First of all, I'd like to thank Teresa Pontieri for her complete analysis of what's going on here. And secondly, I'd like to say that this room is disgusted with this city council, because this is nothing more than a blatant end run by the developers to get around the will of the people. And I think it needs to stop right here.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Bill Cook, Seminole Woods. Mayor, I don't know, I, I, I do realize that there's a lot of money at stake, not just for the developers, but, you know, for everyone, except us. We don't get anything out of this. But loss of time. We've, we've lost our time coming here. And, you know, my, my time's valuable to me. Your time's valuable to you. It's valuable to everyone on this panel, right? Agreed? Okay, so if you don't like your time wasted by us coming up here and crying and moaning about all this stuff, that you already know how angry we all are, that we have to be here tonight to say, to, to voice ourselves and, and, and say what we need to say to try to get you to understand what's the real problem. We killed this thing once, and the only reason it was killed is because we were missing somebody off of the council. All right? That's the real, that's the real thing here that we're looking at. So to come back and try to rehash all this again to make it happen is not right. It's not right at all. This is, I'm wasting my time here. A lot of these people, they're voicing their opinions. They're wasting their time. I didn't even eat dinner tonight, but I knew better that we'd be here till almost quarter after 10. Probably about 11. You guys are gonna be here longer than me, because when this is done, I'm outta here. You know, I work for, I work for government too. I understand. I gotta get up early. So, just make the right choice. Kill this thing. It was killed once. Let's kill it again. We shouldn't even be here tonight.
Is there another speaker? If there are no other speakers, I will close public comment. Go on, who's coming?
Renee Newton. First of all, I just wanted to say that I recall that when this was going up for a vote, the point was made to make sure each and every one of you understood that once you voted, it couldn't be changed. I remember saying to you, "You restored my confidence in our city council." I'm asking you tonight, you all want respect. I've heard it over and over again that we should respect you. Now it's time that the city council returns that respect. Please don't make me take that back.
Thank you for your comment. Any last speakers?
Danny Seaman again, Seminole Woods. I had 15 seconds left when I sat down the last time. I just wanted to say one more thing to Mr. Clufus. You were worried about the litigation factor when it comes to this, but the fact that this hearing is blatantly not in a legal standing, if, if we do do a rehearing, there will be litigation. Thank you.
Any remaining speakers? Seeing none, I will close public comment and come back to the dais.
I have some questions. I just wanna clarify something, and then I wanna clarify it with our attorney, too. Mr. Tremendo says that you did not get written authorization from JTL. You guys are telling me you did. Can you show me that written authorization?
We have an authorization from JTL Grand Landings that...
From the owner?
Yes, sir, order managing partner, whatever.
It's in the packet, Councilman.
All right, because I, I'm also looking at, and, 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 Mr. Tremendo, I don't know if you wanna comment on that, but I'm looking at a couple of other email chains here, and I've gone through all your emails. And Jose, on June 30th, at 8:38 in the morning, you tell Jeff and basically Mr. Tremendo that you need this authorization. On June 30th, at 3:51 PM, Mr. Tremendo writes back to you and says, "This hook, this JTL property is not part of the Cascades." I mean, that, to me, is a pretty obvious thing. Excuse me. You had your chance. I need to ask some questions, so I make the right vote here. So, what I wanna know is, I, I wanna, I wanna see the authorization that you have. Mr. Tremendo has admitted to making a mistake. People make mistakes. I'm good with that. I also wanna know, if we don't have the written auth, if we don't have the written authorization, I wanna know from our attorney, is that a major fact in this rehearing?
Do you want me to answer that question?
Yes, please.
The chair, the chair is absent. Yeah, I am, I got, I gotta look at some notes. All right, so as I, as I understand it...
Excuse me, folks, please.
As I understand it, the, the adoption hearing occurred on November 7, 2023. Mr. Tremendo, on behalf of his client, requested a rehearing. So the only code that's applicable in this particular case that I could find is the, the section regarding rehearings in 2.16 of the code. So, a rehearing is, is allowed, a person, an applicant can request a rehearing. Doesn't mean a rehearing will be granted by the council if the council overlooked or misapprehended some facts or points of law. Okay? So that's the standard, the guidelines, right, that, that the city council is, is considering. Now, to your question, if this is a comprehensive plan amendment, and it needs to be clear, because this is not a city-initiated comprehensive plan amendment, that the properties that are being affected, the property owners explicitly authorize the application to be considered by the council. So that's the question here, as I see it. Based on all the information, did the council overlook or misapprehend some facts that the property owners clearly authorized the application to be processed and voted on by the council? If you determine, based on the facts, that, no, the hook property owner did not authorize the comp plan portion of the application, then I would advise you, under those circumstances, that the law supports the argument to rehear it because the hook property should not have been included because the property owner didn't authorize it. Is that, might be incorrect?
So what we need is an authorization from the property owner, and that's what I have not seen yet. So I would like to see it, if it's there, because Mr. Tremendo says it's not. You guys say it is. I wanna see it.
There's a simple, there's a simple... Excuse me.
Mayor, it's hard to operate under these conditions. I'm beginning to lose patience.
Please, let them have, we, you had public comment. You had a chance. Let them speak.
So I, I, I absolutely agree with the city attorney. We've had these conversations with staff. Look, look at the correspondence between the parties, okay? 6:30, 23. Papa, quick, Papa to Tremendo. Per quick conversation, there is no flume amendment necessary for the hook, for the hook. However, you still need a zoning change of the hook, right? It's currently flagged or PUD. If there is a change being requested, as I understand it, Jeff, please provide signatures. Attached to that, Mr. Papa provided the authorization that was signed for the rezoning, okay? Subsequent to that, Tremendo informs Papa for Douglas to get the JTL signature and limit the policy to 875. Then we go on and says Papa requests a traffic study. So if you review the traffic study, we have that in there. Memo to Papa regarding proposed schedule for Cascades. Papa makes correction to Tremendo regarding Cascade's schedule. So Tremendo proposes different comp plan policies to Cascade's comp plan amendment. Cascades, this is, comp plan was always about Cascades. And when you read about it, it's about that. Papa says to Tremendo, Tremendo informs Papa that the hook parcel, the JTL property, is not owned by Cascades and is not part of this. It goes on and on and on, where we knew that this was not part of the comprehensive plan amendment. Now, okay? So when you receive an authorization back from David West, after being requested to sign it for a rezoning, and it was returned, Mr. West never gave authorization to change or affect, as he says, the comprehensive plan designation. So it should never have been included in changing. Basically, what it did is it, it eliminated development entitlements of approximately 98 units to the hook parcel by doing that. And so we have a significant issue here, a legal issue, not a, a planning issue or what people are, are talking about today. This is a legal issue that JTL never gave its authorization, which is required. And I will just say it. I'm not throwing anybody under the bus. It is for Mr. Papa here today to look you in the eye and say that that authorization was for a change in the comprehensive plan amendment is just not accurate, given his own writings that are in the record. So we're asking you to amend the ordinance to remove JTL Cascades from the ordinance since it never had the written authorization that is required by the law.
Does it answer your question?
I believe it does.
And then what? So, hold on, let's talk it out, though, so...
Yeah, can I, can I just directly respond to that? Because there were some very important points left out of the recitation of emails. So, Mr. Tremendo is correct. On June 30th at 3 PM, he, or rather, at 8:38 AM, from Jose Papa to Jeff Douglas, requests for signature page to include hook piece to rezoning. At 3 PM that day, from Dan Welch to Jeff Douglas and Jose Papa, submittal of updated land use and zoning maps. At 3:51, excuse me, from Mike Tremendo to, to Dan Welch, Jeff Douglas, and Jose Papa, JTL property is not being changed. Absolutely correct. We never changed JTL property. Property has nothing to do with the Cascades application. In response to that, from Mike Tremendo to Jose Papa, applicant to provide signature, limiting policy of 875 units. So this is showing that, yes, the applicant is to provide a signature for zoning, and we're also limiting the policy to 875 units now.
Correct, as to Cascades, not to JTL.
I'm not finished.
But I need this to be accurate, Ms. Pontieri.
All right, let them speak. Let them speak.
This is an important, very... It is a very important process. It's very important that we get this right. She is correct, but to...
Excuse me. All right, you get one more chance, and I will recess. So let them continue the conversation so we can get through this, please. Excuse me. Ductilperson Pontieri, did you wanna finish your statement?
Yes, I'd like to finish, please. So at the end of this, on July 26th, the whole, almost month later, we have an email from you, Mr. Tremendo, at 11:18 AM to Jose Papa, amend limiting policy to 850 units. So here, here's my point, and I'm gonna get into timeline of the hearings as well, which is going to put to bed whether or not you all knew exactly what was going to happen. But in, in accordance with the emails, yes, there's ambiguity. I'll give you that. There's definitely ambiguity with regards to what we're talking about. Is the hook piece in the JTL property to be, is a signature page for the zoning and for the limiting policy? But the fact of the matter is, our LDC does not require a signature page just for a, a limiting policy. It doesn't require that. It requires that for a flume amendment. It requires that for a zoning amendment. But when Jose Papa receives a, a owner authorization specific to zoning, while you all are simultaneously talking about a limiting policy, it is perfectly reasonable...
Absolutely. It's personally reasonable to make that mistake in that assumption.
No, that's not what I said. Don't put words in my mouth. It is perfectly reasonable for him to believe that the application from David West was, was regarding zoning and the, the limiting policy. And the problem is not that he misunderstood anything. The problem is that we went through three hearings, and not once was it brought up until after the applicant didn't get their way, until after we limited this to 416 units. Now, I have more to, to, to discuss with regards to the, the hearings that actually took place, but in response, I wanted to respect Vice Mayor's question with response to the signature page only. And I, and Councilman Clufus, I didn't mean to cut you off.
Oh, no, no, I appreciate that. I was just curious what the next step, or what we're actually requesting. There's no way that we can, at least from where I'm sitting, just revert back to an 850 units. Are we asking for this to be excluded from the plan and still remain the 416 units for limited development? Or what is the actual ask? That was where I was leading this.
So, when you look at the records, there is only one application, one application and one signature page regarding flume amendments or a change to the comprehensive plan, and that is for Cascades. That application was for 850 units at Cascades, okay? There was never an application or a signature by JTL giving permission for the city to affect the comprehensive plan. So by removing JTL from the ordinance, the request is still 850 units. However, I told you before that because at the request of council, or I guess it was, it was just discussed, that the applicant removed the request for multifamily, an apartment complex and a townhouse, 850 is not necessary at this point in time.
Can you remind me how we got to 416?
Just because I mentioned to you, the only, the only, the only thing that I mentioned, only thing that I mentioned was the, the merits of modifying the ordinance comes second. The question is whether or not there was a misapprehension or the council overlooked some fact or law, right, in order to reengage the hearing process and consider re-adopting the ordinance. And there's a factual, there's a factual question. I think we're clear on the law. If he didn't have the, the city didn't have the authorization from the hook property owner, then that's a problem legally. But there is a factual issue whether or not the city did have that authorization that needs to be clarified and then decided by the council. It's a factual question. And, and I just wanna mention this, because I'm, I didn't, I didn't see it. Mr. Papa, maybe you wanna mention this. The hook property, and I understand Mr. Tremendo's point, that his position is it wasn't intended to be part of the Cascade planning area, because the hook property has a future, city future land use designation currently, correct?
That's correct.
And doesn't, isn't it also part of another planning area? Or was before the adoption of this ordinance?
Yes, it was part of another planning area to the north.
And I couldn't remember that name.
The Grand Landings.
Okay, so, you know, that's just, that's just a fact to consider, in my view, because it, it already was part of a planning area, and it als, it also had a future land use map designation. So the question, it's just, it's just a fact to just to consider whether you truly did have the authorization from the property owner to change that, because that was a pre-existing development, right, going into the ordinance adoption process for the Cascades, correct?
That, that's correct, thanks.
So I'm with you, Councilman Clufus. I think it's quite audacious to even consider going back to 850 units based on the fact that if, in fact, there was a misapprehension of fact, which there wasn't, but if there was, and we were to just take out the hook piece, then they were only entitled to 98 units as a part of the previous Grand Landings development. So in actuality, we'd be looking at 416 units as a part of the Cascades planning area, plus potentially an additional 98 units only to... Cascades planning area, plus potentially an additional ninety-eight units only to, to come, to revert back to, oh, we need to rehear the whole eight hundred and fifty units argument is ridiculous. So, I mean, at the very least, that would be the most that we should even be considering. But the fact of the matter is, and I'll just go ahead and get into this now so that I, other council members can, can go ahead and make their comments.
Let me be clear morally, I'm with you, I'm with you.
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, again, I think that we are really, really setting ourselves up here. I mean, it's an abuse of discretion, in my opinion, to even be rehearing this because we didn't misapprehend any fact, and, and I'll go through the hearings in a second to, to show that we were all under the understanding very clearly of what was going on. The fact of the matter is, if we were to, we've already granted this rehearing, we have the opportunity to set very strong precedent to say at this point, yeah, we granted your rehearing to go ahead and consider, to, to your point, to go ahead and consider exactly what you said to us. But in looking at all the facts, there was no misapprehension of fact, which is required by four point one six of our LDC, and there was no misapprehension of the law. We would create an incredibly slippery slope here today if we gave the applicant another bite at the apple, which is essentially what they've asked for. They've asked for another bite at the apple because of the limiting policy of four hundred and sixteen units. Now, if we go back to December, the September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three council meeting, at one hour and forty-six minutes into the meeting, Mr. Papa specifies that only three hundred and thirty acres are subject to the map change, which is the land use designation and the annex, due to the annexation in August. He goes on to say that the additional forty-five acres, or the Hook piece, which he actually refers to it as, was previously annexed in two thousand nineteen and will be part of the policy limit of eight hundred and fifty dwelling units. He then shows a map specifying that only three hundred and thirty acres was a part of the land use change excluding the forty-eight acre, or sorry, the forty-five acre Hook piece to be, to not be a part of that land use amendment. Furthermore, at a minute and fifty-two, at one hour and fifty-two minutes, the recommendation from staff was to approve the land use designation as one, the three hundred and thirty acres, and the site-specific policy limiting the development of the subject area to eight hundred and fifty dwelling units, which included the Hook piece. At two hours and five minutes, Mr. Shmento presents to the city council as the applicant's plural attorney. So he was representing both property owners for this issue. Additionally, and this is, this is to me the most telling part of all of this, I think it was Ms. Austin, now, she came up here and said, I remember specifically that Teresa, referring to me, was accused of misrepresentation because she made the comment that we were doubling units by going from four hundred and sixteen units to eight hundred and fifty units. Mr. Douglas stood right there at that podium at two hours and five minutes, or a little after that, no, I'm sorry, at two hours and forty-seven minutes, and accused me of spreading misinformation because I said we were doubling density. And his justification for me spreading misinformation was that previously the four hundred and sixteen units did not include the Hook piece. Now, we were including the Hook piece. So technically, we weren't doubling the density. We were going from five, whatever four hundred and sixteen plus ninety-eight units is, so what, five hundred and fourteen units to eight fifty. We weren't literally doubling density. So on the one hand, out of one side of the applicant's mouth, we hear, oh, well, you're spreading misinformation because we're not doubling density because now the Hook piece is included. But now here we are, and out of the other side of their mouth, they want to say, oh, no, 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 we never intended to include the Hook piece. So because we had an attorney here representing both applicants for three hearings, and we continue to see a very clear dichotomy between land use designation and policy limit with the Cascades planning area, those terms are not interchangeable, and they are stated separately and depicted separately in legal descriptions in ordinances that everybody had due process and notice to review. Going on, if we look at the November seventh meeting during the second reading, when reading the title of the ordinance at an hour and fifty-seven minutes, the attorney specifically states there will be an amendment to the future land use map of three hundred and thirty point eight acres from county designation to city of Palm Coast designation as described in more detail in the exhibits that we've already talked about tonight, and then talks about specifically the Cascades planning area that encompasses the entire three hundred and seventy-five acres. Again, at an hour and fifty-nine minutes, Jose Papa clarifies that only the three hundred and thirty acres were subject to the map change, which is the land use designation, and the Hook piece of forty-five acres will not be subject to that land use change, but it is subject to the policy limit of eight hundred and fifty dwelling units. The same recommendation that was made to PLDRB on eight sixteen was the same recommendation made on the night nineteen meeting, and then at two hours, two hours and six minutes and thirty seconds, I specifically clarify, are the exhibits correct? I was told yes. There is absolutely no reason we should be here tonight, and we have a chance to right the ship, we have a chance to tell them no, we have a chance to stick to our guns and do the right thing. The mayor yield.
So my next question. As I said all along, I made a mistake not looking at the legal description that got put in to the ordinance. The ordinance pictures show that Cascades is white compared to the yellow and green, indicating the comp plan amendment and the zoning change. So yes, Ms. Pontieri is partially right and partially wrong to the extent that there is a mischaracterization of what our intent was, okay? So when we go back to it, at two hours and forty-four minutes and ten seconds at that exact meeting, Mr. Douglas gets up and says, we're not doubling the size, we were talking about the size of it. When we get into two hours and forty-seven minutes and fifteen seconds, we don't start talking about using those types of words of doubling the density. Regardless, regardless, as your attorney has told you, there was no authorization by JTL, and it's a problem. And so to avoid future steps, we filed this motion because there was a misunderstanding of fact between staff and ourselves about how JTL, remember, some of the confusion might have come from, we were hearing both a comprehensive plan amendment and the very next thing, we were hearing a rezoning. So when we're talking about those things, obviously there could be some confusion and lack of clarity. But when we walked out of this room, your staff will tell you that we had no idea that we had affected the comp plan designation to JTL because why? There was never a written authorization to affect it by that property owner, and that's where we stand today. It's very, very simple. It's very simple.
Okay, so.
I have a question for our, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, so if, if moving forward, and I would like to hear from our council, if this is potentially an issue, what is the solution that we have moving forward? Do we do, do we just remove this parcel, remain at the four sixteen, and then handle it from there? Or what, what is?
Well, we're, we're in the midst of a rehear, so it's going to have to be a motion.
Sure, well, I'm just talking about possibilities of, of what we're trying to get to because it's not, we're not, obviously not doing multifamily residential, right? So we're approved for four sixteen, if we minus the parcel, do we stay at four sixteen and then we handle the parcel in the future when there's something that they want to do with the Hook?
Our applications for eight hundred and fifty.
All right. Is that a question for?
A question for, for space, just.
Are you, are you able to answer that question?
I, I think the applicant already answered by saying that they, they, they're reverting back to their original application of eight hundred and fifty.
Yeah, as I said earlier, Mr. Clufus, I'm sorry, I can't, as I said earlier, there's no need for eight hundred and fifty units because the multifamily has been, you know, we've walked away from that. So what we would like to see is a, a reduction of a hundred and fifty units down to seven hundred, we could do, so that would be, that would be roughly two units per upland acre, two units per upland acre, or a little less than one per gross acre when you consider that the Cascades project originally gave away over three hundred and something acres of land to the county when we did this or when it was done some time ago. So we're, we're, we're able to have that conversation and lower the density, the requested density on the application.
So I, I just want to make sure I heard you. You guys are willing to come down to seven hundred?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you said?
Yes, sir.
Hey, 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 come on. Let's keep this going, come on.
Mayor, this time I'd like to make a motion to reinstate our approval of the ordinance on eleven seven, limiting the policy to four sixteen and doing exactly what we did on that, on that date.
So I have a motion from Councilperson Pontieri, do you have any comment before we move forward?
A second.
Oh, wait, I haven't asked for a second yet.
I mean, just procedurally, just.
Just a second here, procedurally.
I mean, just procedurally, I'm just trying to sort this out because if the council believes they had authorization, if the, if the council, after conducting this hearing, believes that they had authorization at the property owner, then the prior decision stands. If the council does not think they had clear authorization from the property owner, the Hook property, then the council needs to then take this matter up, this ordinance up again. So.
So I have a question for our.
In other words, in other words, there's no, there's no, if the council believes they had authorization from the property owner, then the prior decision stands, there's no, there's no need to re-adopt something that's already been approved.
I, I do have a question, sir.
So do I need a consensus on that from?
Well, I just, I just want to know if we do not have proper authorization and we let this stand.
No, you may not, please sit down.
I have evidence.
Excuse me, I'm the presiding officer.
Are you denying evidence?
Please, have a seat until I, until I acknowledge you.
This is evidence, why won't you?
Excuse me, excuse me, we're talking here.
You're showing your colors, man. Keys.
Remove. You have one more chance and you're out.
Well, do your job.
I am doing my job.
No, you're not. Shh.
Signature.
Excuse me, please.
We're trying to help you understand.
All right, I can't, I can't work like this.
We'll have a recess for fifteen minutes.
Yeah, of course. How long is the recess?
All right, I can't, I can't work like this.
We'll have a recess for fifteen minutes.
Yeah, of course.
How long is the recess?
Hell, bro, it's coming.
We call the meeting back to order. And since we have rapidly approaching the 11 o'clock hour, let me read our meeting rules. No meeting shall be permitted to continue beyond 11:00 PM. Without the approval of majority of the city council, a new time limit must be established before taking a city council vote to extend the meeting. In the event that a meeting has not been adjourned or continued by city council vote prior to 11:00 PM, the items not acted on are to be continued to 9:00 AM on the following day unless state law requires hearing a matter at a different time, or unless the city council determines by a majority vote of city council members present some other time certain. So, we have reached the 11 o'clock hour, so I'm going to have to ask city council members to consider renewing this meeting time certain on the January 16th date.
I'm good with that.
No, Mayor, we need to get this, at least this issue done tonight and pursuant to the rules. If we need to continue the rest until tomorrow at 9:00 AM, then that's what we should do.
9:00 AM tomorrow is not possible. The facility is not available.
Well, you don't have consensus for me to move this all until the 16th.
And other city council members.
I have adopted this appointment.
Right. Right.
Yeah, I'm fine either way. I have availability tomorrow.
So, I would need a motion.
I'll make the motion to...
Date it.
To the 16th, you said?
Correct.
AM on the 16th, continue.
Correct.
Mayor, previously when we've hit the 11 o'clock hour...
Wait, 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 I have a motion. Is there a second?
Is there a second? Looking for discussion, sure.
Okay, I have a second. Now discussion, please. Councilwoman Pontieri.
Previously, when we've hit the 11 o'clock hour, you have asked us if we would like to continue onward with this meeting. That question was not posed to council, therefore I think that was an unfair question to give us a ultimatum, that we either have to push this to the next business meeting, or continue onward to tomorrow. This should continue tonight. And furthermore, the 16th is a 9:00 AM meeting, so we know that a lot of these folks won't be able to be here. And previously, when we've had controversial issues that are of high interest with the public, we have the consensus specifically from Vice Mayor has been, no, these folks deserve to be here. They spent their time here tonight. At the very least, we owe them the respect to get through this last issue.
Okay, I appreciate your discussion. With that, I'll call the vote. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyder?
I didn't hear the last question.
Could you state the motion again for her?
The motion was to continue the remaining items at the January 16th meeting at 9:00 AM.
No. I would like to do it if possible.
So now, okay, continue.
Councilmember Clufus?
Aye.
Councilmember Pontieri?
No.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
The motion fails three to two.
Okay. Now, I have to ask city council members, okay, we need to establish a time to continue this meeting, so I'm looking for a motion.
So, I just want to understand something. Ms. Hyder was saying that she didn't want to go that far out, is that correct?
Yeah, the vote's done.
Right, right, right. So, we can make a motion then to pick another date, is that correct?
You can make another motion. What you can do is make a motion to continue, to extend this meeting for a said amount of time.
Make a motion to continue it for 30 minutes.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I think that's the max we can go, right? Isn't there a maximum duration?
No.
There is no max?
No, I read the adjournment before. Is there a second? So, I have a second. Any other discussion? So, all in favor of continuing this meeting for another 30 minutes? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so we'll continue on.
Question, point of order. What happens to the rest of the agenda? We wrap it up in 30 minutes, we have to push it to the next meeting, right?
I'll have to go through this again. Okay. Okay, so, comments from city council members regarding...
So, my question was to our city attorney, which I didn't get to really ask, is if we don't have the proper authorization, can JTL sue our city?
Short answer is yes.
And based on what you've seen, the evidence going back and forth, the emails, the whole nine yards, what would your advice be?
I think it boils down to a factual question, councilman. And, you know, it's a factual determination for the city council to make. I'm not in a position to make that factual determination. It's for you all, the five of you collectively, to decide how you see the facts, whether or not JTL provided proper authorization to the city to amend the planning area to include the Hook property into the Cascades. Did you have that authorization or not?
Have we determined that, whether we have it or not?
I think that's what we're doing now, Councilwoman Hyder, is trying to make that determination. And City Attorney, if you could, it's true that we up here are the fact finders, and we can't just look at whether or not there was a signed authorization in a vacuum. We take a totality of the circumstances, i.e. the fact that there were three hearings where all of the data was the same, all of the maps were the same, all the legals were the same, and JTL's attorney was present at all of those meetings representing JTL. So, it's not just the written authorization, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's taking everything in totality to determine as to whether we as the fact finders think there was authorization.
I think it goes to the question of ambiguity, frankly, because, I mean, I know there was a gentleman waving a piece of document, but I'm assuming it's what staff provided in the package, which is a signed...
Yeah, it's page 160.
Yeah, you have a signed document, right? That's in the package, you know, purporting to be authorization from the JTL property owner. You know, first and foremost, in any review of a document, you look at the four corners of the document. Do the four corners of the document clearly indicate that they, JTL authorized the city to proceed with the Comprehensive Plan Amendment related to their property? If it's not clear on the document and it's ambiguous, then perhaps you can take additional evidence to consider whether or not they provided the authorization or not.
So, I'm looking at two things. I'm looking at the exchange of emails between Jose and Chimento. Chimento is very clear, this is not part of the Cascades. And then the next thing I want to look at is who signed the authorization. Was it the owner of JTL?
It was.
It was? I haven't seen it.
It's in our packet.
And it's, and who's the owner of JTL?
David West, and he signed it.
Well, I've asked for it twice, I haven't seen it. I didn't see it in the packet.
It is, it's on page 147 of the packet.
Can you show it to me?
I can't. Right here.
Vice Mayor, you...
And this is not notarized, is it?
It's not, but that's his fault.
So, is that an issue? I want to ask our attorney.
Does it reference the Flume or the zoning?
It doesn't represent, it doesn't reference anything, and that's the whole...
That's what the ambiguity, that's what's troubling me.
And I agree with you, Mayor, that is where the ambiguity is, but that's why I say we cannot rely on just this document in a vacuum. It's a totality of the circumstances, and the fact is, we had somebody come before us representing JTL as their attorney for three, three hearings, that said, I represent JTL, and all of the materials have remained the same. Furthermore, we then have the other applicant come up and say, you're misrepresenting the number of units that were previously approved, because the Hook piece is now included when previously it wasn't. So, that's why I say, Mayor, we cannot just rely on this document. It is a totality of the circumstances. And based on a totality of the circumstances...
If any single fact is out of place, that was the rationale for the rehearing, not the totality.
You're right, it could be. It could be the rationale for the rehearing, absolutely, but that's why I said earlier...
But we're here now, and the question is, how do we get to a finish line?
Yeah, I agree with you, and I think that...
I'm going to reach out, if I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I would reach out to the applicant. Is there, is there a finish line that we can get to?
A finish line that we can get to? What we have requested, because we have stated over and over again that JTL never provided authorization.
Okay, we'll pass that.
That it be removed from the ordinance.
Okay.
First and foremost.
Okay.
That would then leave...
No, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to lead you, just bear with me for a minute. That doesn't bother anybody up here, right?
Yes, it does.
But, removing it?
Removing the Hook piece?
Yeah.
That's the whole point. The whole point is that the Hook piece was explicitly a part of the planning area from the get-go, and the representative, Mr. Douglas, who chimed in on the emails on behalf of JTL, then gets at this podium and says, the Hook piece is now included where it wasn't included before, so we're not really doubling the density. The point is, they knew what they were doing. They knew the Hook piece was included, so yes, I have a very large problem excluding that Hook piece.
Not true.
All right, that's one. Go ahead.
Not, not, not true. I think we're very, very clear and have been clear since the beginning of time, given the fact that there's never been an application for Cascades or an owner's authorization, and my continued representations to staff has been, it is not part of the Comprehensive Plan. Yes, there were oversights, as we've talked about, we can go over and over and over and over, but the fact of the matter remains, as your attorney told you, there is no authorization, and it would then be subject to other problems. So, again, we're asking for the removal of Cascades from the ordinance.
All right, so each council member has to, based on the facts that you've heard here this evening, you'll have to make your decision, and I would ask for a motion?
I make a motion to deny the request and revert back to the 11-7 decision.
So, I have a motion from Councilwoman Pontieri. Is there a second?
A second.
I have a second from Councilwoman Hyder. Is there any additional discussion?
Well, my question is, so, isn't there a way that we can, if we were to remove the Hook parcel from this, doesn't that close any legal, like, potential problems for the city? If we just remove the parcel from this Comprehensive Plan Amendment, the 416 stays, and then there's no legal issues?
If the Hook property is removed, then it's not subject to the Comp Plan Amendment, right? So, the owner of the Hook property would not have an issue, they would have status quo, right? They would be part of the other planning area, 98 units, and they have a future land use designation of residential. Then, the next step in the process would be to consider the applicant's request, right, which is not, which is not JTL, the other applicant, the applicant, or depending on how you look at it, then you would have to make a decision on, a policy decision, on the future land use map amendment, and the density that you, the council would desire to place on, on the Cascades area excluding the Hook property. And that's a whole, that's just an initial decision, original decision, that you handle in the normal course of considering Comp Plan Amendments of the future land use map kind.
So, that would be two separate issues.
Is that, is that, I mean, that wild? I mean, isn't that kind of prudent in both regards? I mean, is 96 units going to, this isn't, we're not getting to the 850, there's no multifamily residential, we eliminate the odds of having illegal repercussions for the city? It just seems like that is, I mean, it seems pretty fair, but...
Yeah, and Councilman Clufus, normally I would agree with you, absolutely. I think that you're, you're being pragmatic in that, in that regard. My, my issue with that fundamentally is that I still think that it sets up a very slippery slope, because we're here because of a mistake that the applicant made, not because of a mistake, and that's my opinion, but not because of a mistake that staff made or that council made. So, we are setting ourselves up, in my opinion, in the future, for this to happen again, and I don't think that that is the right precedent to set. So, that's, that's why I have that issue.
Ready to call the vote, based on your motion and your second? So, Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Danko?
No.
Councilmember Hyder?
No.
Councilmember Clufus?
No.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
No.
Motion fails four to one.
Okay.
Can I put forward a motion that we just, we remove the Hook parcel, eliminating any legal repercussions from this, and the 416 remains, the SRF1, or I'm sorry, SFR1, and the preservation remains, and then that eliminates our repercussions from this?
So, Councilman Clufus has made a motion, did the council members hear the motion correctly?
Yeah, but I thought our attorney just told us it was a two-part process.
Well, he's making a motion on one part.
Sure. Just to remove the Hook.
Sure.
Can I back up a little bit? Did I hear that last question correctly?
No, you didn't.
I'm sorry.
It doesn't matter.
Who's questions? Who's questions?
Did that we just voted on yes or no?
So, Councilman Clufus, oh...
Not, not this before that.
The motion to deny the hearing.
The motion...
That failed.
Kayla, can you...
To uphold the original...
Right.
However you want to say that.
Oh, I vote to uphold the original.
The prior vote, what was the prior vote? I think that's what Councilwoman Hyder is asking.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because I don't think I heard it properly.
Okay, it may be easiest if I actually ask Councilmember Pontieri to restate that motion for clarity.
The motion was to deny the request to rehear this and to reinstitute the decision that was made on November 7th.
The original one?
Yes.
I agree with that, I'm sorry.
Yeah, but you already voted.
And it would still, it'd still be three to two.
But I didn't hear it.
Okay.
I know, but I did not hear it. And you know I have a problem with it.
No, no, I have a problem. Councilman Clufus, you, can you restate your motion?
Yes, that we remove, for sure. We remove the Hook parcel from this, we don't get anywhere, we don't raise the 416 from the zoning map amendment from single SFR1 and preservation, and the Hook parcel is removed, which would limit legal repercussions for the city.
So, there's a motion from Councilman Clufus. Is there a second?
Can we just clarify something?
Let me get the second, then we have discussion, if there is a second.
Yeah, I'll second, then let's have a discussion.
Vice Mayor Danko, second, please. Councilwoman Pontieri, please, discussion now.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because I understand your intent, Councilman Clufus, but to reference SFR1, that's a zoning reference, so I want to make sure that we're not convoluted the two issues.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, and just for, because we're here for a reason.
Do you want to amend your motion?
I will, I'll remove the verbiage for SRF1 and preservation.
Yes, so...
Can you just amend that part? Say it again.
Amended. I would motion that we are going to remove the Hook parcel, and we are going to leave the Comprehensive Plan Amendment with a site-specific policy to limit development to the 416 units.
Yeah.
There's a second.
And I'll second that.
And a second from Councilwoman Pontieri. Any further discussion from the city council?
In essence, if I understand the motion, the motion is to, although not stated, the motion is to readopt the ordinance excluding the Hook property, and the remaining portion would be the Cascade area, subject to the area-specific policy of a maximum of 416 units. So, that's, that's action on the proposed ordinance, and Mayor, what I was trying to say is, that now requires a hearing, right, on the ordinance.
Why does it require a hearing?
Because this is a, this is a readoption hearing. It's an amended, it's, you're amending the prior action. If you take the Hook property out, you're amending the prior action of the council.
So, would we, would it require a second reading? Is that what you're saying?
It would be, well, it's on, it's on the agenda, so it's like a third reading, but it's a readoption of the ordinance excluding the Hook property from the Cascade development area, planning area. So, they would, the Hook property would be removed, as I understand the motion, the Cascade planning area would be the remaining portion of the property, subject to the area-specific limitation of 416 dwelling units for that, for the Cascade area. That's how I understood the motion, so that's a motion to adopt the ordinance, an amended ordinance, so what I'm saying, you need to have a public hearing on whether or not that...
As another step.
Yeah, whether or not that amendment is appropriate.
So, Mr. Clufus, would you be willing just to remove the Hook, so then we can get to the other part?
No, I don't, I don't think that's necessary.
That not... We're going to have to go to another hearing.
Another hearing?
We're going to have a hearing.
But the motion can still be passed today and then heard again, correct? Because, I think the motion can be passed today as posed by Councilman Clufus, and then we would have to, on the January 6th hearing, do a second read.
No. No, this would be a readoption, this is an adoption hearing, so it would be a readoption of the, of the ordinance as amended, and would be transmitted to the Department of Commerce within the 10-day statutory time period.
So, it would need a third reading essentially, but this would be essential, I'm sorry.
This is the, this is the, this would be final adoption.
Okay, so, so can we proceed on his motion as is?
Yes, as a motion, we have a second, so...
Okay.
But it requires a public hearing.
You mean public comment?
Public comment.
Yeah, public hearing.
I was confusing hearing with comment.
The applicant is going to have something to say about what the motion is on the floor, the public obviously is going to have a lot to say.
So, we have a motion and a second, and we've had discussion by city council following the motion and the second, so now I would open up for public comment regarding the motion that is being spoken.
Keeping in mind that we only have about 12 minutes left.
Go ahead, let's vote. So, I want to make sure that everybody has their opportunity. Okay, with that, then I will...
Just let us know what happened.
Close public comment. Back to the dais, any additional discussion?
Any further comments from the applicant?
No, no. They would have spoke up.
No?
No comments.
Final discussion, okay? Any final discussion?
No.
Call it.
Vice Mayor Danko?
Yes.
Councilmember Hyder?
Yes.
Councilmember Clufus?
Aye.
Councilmember Pontieri?
Yes.
Mayor Alvin?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Very good. Okay.
Can I also make a motion that we...
Hold on.
I'm sorry. I was just going to suggest that, now that we've wrapped this item up, I think this was the most critical of items as far as everyone's here, and I think it would be okay if we were to push the next items to a follow business meeting.
I was going, in the next 10 minutes, I'm not sure, under the threat of the clock, that we would be considering the next agenda items fully and well, nor is the public still available to comment, so I would go ahead and continue this, but it won't be tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock. It'd be... Please.
The, the next business meeting is January 16th.
So, time certain, and I need, I need a majority vote on that.
I'll make the motion.
Because we're not available here tomorrow, so it should not be tomorrow, that's just not possible.
There's a code for it.
So, I have a motion, is there a second? I have a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed?
The motion passes unanimously.
Clerk has the count, thank you.
And that, just for the record, I just want to say, that, as I understand it, there was a motion to postpone the remaining items, including the ordinances which have been duly advertised, to the business meeting on January 16th at 9:00 AM. If that's correct, for anyone in attendance, located here at City Hall.
And with that, I will ask for a...
A motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. Let me, let me, let me close, let me close the meeting, and I'll answer your question.
Mayor...
Please, go ahead.
Before, before, and I only bring this up because I don't want to keep everybody longer, but I do want to just bring up one last issue, because I think it's important that we hear from, this could affect the next meeting. We all received a letter from our firefighters' union with regards to having their actuary present to us at a workshop regarding negotiations that have been occurring, and so I would like...
I'm not familiar with a letter like that, but...
It was from Patrick Giuliano with the union, it was an email to all of us, we were all on it.
I think, I'm sorry, I apologize, nothing I've seen.
Okay, well, I...
Unless it's coming during this meeting.
I would like to get consensus that we allow the union to come before us at a workshop to present from their actuary.
I haven't seen the letter, I apologize, I have not.
I thought, I just searched my email.
I thought they were...
Anyway, this is not an agenda item, and I realize you want to make the comment, I appreciate, I just, I'm not, I haven't seen, I don't know what it is. I can't, I can't vote if I don't know.
Okay.
I mean, is there a reason why that can't be spoken at the upcoming workshop and set up?
Well, that's why I wanted to discuss it now, was so that they could perhaps come to the workshop and present, because I'm trying to avoid an impasse between the city...
I just don't have any background to be able to, but I'm...
Okay, fair enough.
Happy to discuss it the next meeting for sure.
Fair enough.
So, I do have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
And a third.
All in favor, please, aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay.